We're going to follow the meeting to order. First, can you please tell them all?
Mayor Proton Lokaxin.
President.
Mayor Brown.
President.
Councilmember Tucson.
President.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
President.
Councilmember Jay Simmons.
President.
Councilmember King.
President.
The six present, there's a quorum.
All right, please manage your angle for a moment, Simon, and the president will. Thank you, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. The movement seconded, any updates, changes? Being none on favor? And this is our opportunity now for public comments, so members of the audience can approach council, have up to three minutes to provide commentary to council. Please state your name and your address if you are so comfortable, and we'll start with those who are tied up on the list. Take hands on the audience and then move to those on Zoom. All right, so first we have here Mary Silver.
Thank you, I'm in the early room. Mary Silver, I live at 310 East Press across the street from the Shanti Baris. And I'm here to speak in support of her appointment to the Ward 3, the municipal position. I've known her for years since she first moved in. I know her to be a really wonderful person and very engaged in our ward. And I was very impressed with all she did to knock on doors and meet people and sort of extend her network of contacts in the ward when she was running through the position. And I just think she'd be a wonderful addition to city council. So as a neighbor and a friend, I believe she has what it takes, she's got a lot of job experience in his management budgets and works really great with other people, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next we have Sagar Melvin.
Well, it's a new year's call, especially the mayor and our new council. Well, you all know a little bit, the high rise. As of last year's standing, we lost over 21 people in three months. Which brings me the office won't tell us where they went, when they went, the way they went. And I would like the investigations don't find out where the people went. I know one of my neighbors moved to Toledo, the other one died of cancer. But we have doors that are broken in. Because if it's police department, they would have the key maintenance for that event. So there's two apartments that were broken in. Six or seven and three or seven. Plus is freedom of age. We have a basic mental health issue. And to give you an idea of how the management thinks a passage around you can just keep them. To get the idea of what mentality we're seeing in books. Work with or be subjected to, it's probably more than that. I've been in and out City Hall, all kinds of places, asking for help. Now, the first step we need to get done in our building is to get the intercom system set up into each apartment. So seniors don't have to come down in the middle of the night to let a stranger in. Because the intercom system has been disconnected. A good example is Memorial Day weekend. I requested a couple of brochures from Debbie Dina's office. And supposed to bring him over to my apartment. Our management team wouldn't let her in to come to my apartment and deliver the brochures. So that's another idea how that thing work. Plus what, like that, you can see that they expect seniors of the trash room closes at five o'clock. Monday through Friday. So the people working don't even get a chance to clean up that apartment. Because they have to take the trash outside around the building to the big trash compactor. Which have those heavy lids on it, you can lift them. And we can't expect seniors and wheelchair, oxygen masks and all that, to took out the garbage all the way back there. So this is, you're in this, okay?
Yeah.
So, because I only got three minutes.
Yes, and your three minutes actually ended, but can we set up a time control?
This is a bag full of papers. And four months of health condition I had to work through because they were going to evict me. I walked out across Ipsy to each attorney's office to see if they would help. The only one that even let me in the door and talked to is Mr. Barnes' office. So finally, you know, I ended up, the legal partner, they helped there, but for four months, my blood pressure was up over 200.
And I'm so, I'm so sorry.
No reason to be treated that way, we're seniors, we will pay our rent on time. So we want you to help investigate it and change the management team because this fellow housing, and that's 18 more buildings in southeast Michigan, so they can just move the team someplace else.
So Miss Melvin, I will follow up with you, we can talk further about it and
I don't understand what you said.
I said, I'm sorry, I said, I will reach out to you and we'll, we'll follow up, I'll talk with you directly about these new things. Yes, I will.
If I keep requesting it to ding, I'll run it by this, I know. It never, if I get notified, the New York Times.
I will. I will, I will come over, no problem, thank you so much. Have a good evening. Next I have on the list Barbara Village. Pretty close, it's Nick, this is the perfect name, Nick, sorry, thank you for correcting, getting your name.
Good evening. Yeah, Barbara's Nick, 314 Maple Street, in Ward 3. And I'll be speaking about the Ward 3 council appointment. First off, my spouse, Celeste McQuillan, can't be here tonight. And I would like to thank all of you and all of the candidates for the opening of the Ward 3 council seat. For your willingness to serve our community. We are 30-year residents of the city of Ypsilanti, and we are appreciative of the energized political discussions we've experienced over the years. We are grateful to live in a community where most residents are aware of and take interest in the issues concerning the well-being of the people who live here. During the course of our 30 years in Ypsilanti, Celeste and I have become senior citizens. But we remain extremely progressive in our thoughts and actions, largely shaped by our years in the National Union leadership of the American Federation of Citizens. And we are deeply dedicated to social justice. I address you this evening to express our full and sincere support for Amber Fellows to be appointed by you as representative of Ward 3. In our experience, Amber has always seen the big picture and does her homework seeking out facts on all sides of an issue. She speaks truth to power. She has the best interests of the people of Ypsilanti at heart. And perhaps most importantly, Amber does not want our city of Ypsilanti, diverse in all the best senses of the word, to be hollowed out to a citizenry only consisting of people who have frankly plenty of money to keep up with rising housing costs. Our most memorable experience with Amber's political gifts came during the 2017 discussion of the doomed International Village project. Because our only knowledge about the project that comes through stories and local news sources, we don't do social media. We came to the meeting at the freight house fully believing that International Village would be a great project for our city, bringing new businesses and residents and finally ridding the city of Ypsilanti of the albatross known as Water Street. But speaking against the project, Amber's brilliant presentation opened our eyes to the folly of International Village. In those few minutes, it became clear to Celeste, I mean, that the project should be abandoned immediately and totally. The subsequent slow motion collapse of the project proved if Amber's evaluation correct. Particularly since that day, we have had the utmost respect for Amber's research and positions on issues. Please appoint Amber Fellows to the Ward 3 council seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Patton Doyle.
Hi there, everybody, and thanks for the time to speak. My name is Patton Doyle, and I'm a resident over at 16 North Washington, living above the Cudic Lining, just a small business that I run here. I'm also speaking today as the board chair of the DDA. Just to introduce myself, because we are not, there's some new faces, and also we've not done always the best job connecting what we do with what you do. But we have had some successful partnerships over the years, and I know that Chris, I don't know if it's every meeting, but often we'll give you updates on what we do. And I just wanted to come and say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city in board chair, but, or in the board position. But I also recognize that we serve as a board at the pleasure of city council. And of course, if you ever have the opportunity to reach out, you're welcome, you can get my contact information through Chris. I'd love to have your input on how we can work together to make the city of Ypsilanti a wonderful place. The DDA, those who do not know, collects a special assessment district in three districts in Ypsilanti. And we collect mostly taxes that we otherwise go to the state or the county and then redirect it into the local businesses and buildings. We also are eligible to apply for a lot of grants that we bring in, I think we brought in something like $30,000 of investment in the last several years. And I'm hopeful that we can continue to do things like the warming center and the overnight shelter that we partnered with over the last couple of years. Well, thanks for your time, and unfortunately I can't stay this evening, but feel free to reach out at any time, so we can get better at finding.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address council at this time?
Hey. How's it going, everybody? Chief. So every single one of us, especially the four, the four councilmembers in the middle, knows pretty, pretty well, I just want to dig, just to get them around. Know, knows pretty well that Amber has tons more relevant experience to be a city council member than any of the other three applicants who I don't, again, mean that negatively. And we know that the local government uses Amber and others and then ignores and systematically belittles them at a moment's notice. And we know that the same thing is going to happen tonight, probably. And it's clear that, you know, you all and you, your supporters don't usually like share solid reasons for doing so. Instead, the conversations often may be something about something else. Maybe politeness. And that people often who would not benefit from Amber's policies don't want to admit that those ideas challenge the class structure and are therefore incredibly popular among most Ypsilantians, especially renters, you know, make up about 66% of it. Amber's track record is overwhelmingly convincing. And council should not ignore that. To completely ignore it, and I mean honestly, not to put Amber on council, is neither democratic nor data-driven decision-making. But, so obviously I'm asking for you all to do the right thing and help if these people get represented by putting Amber on council. But if you don't do that, I'm asking you to at least describe why not. I think we deserve that. You know, I don't know if it's because you think Amber's too radical, if you don't think reparations are good or plausible. Or you don't think it's worth it to draw it on power in Ypsilanti. You disagree with the narrative that a few landlords dictate way too many people's lives in the city. But, yeah, this is an undemocratic process. And I hope it changes.
Please state your name for the record.
Brian Garrett.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to address council?
Hello, council, Amber Fellows. So, there's a few comments, I would say that we ran a campaign on short notice in part to test the waters to see if there was as much support for values as systemic changes that directly impact residents in Ipsy as we thought there were. And the beautiful thing is, not only is there more than sizable support, it appears that reparations for Black and Indigenous residents, broadening decision-making power beyond City Hall, and fighting landlord monopolies are central concerns and therefore centrist ideas for our electorate immensely. We no longer have to pretend that these are fringe issues and desires, they are not. The only thing that's holding the current power structure in place is this particular appointment process. Which something especially in recent years playing out where folks are appointed to vacant seats and then eventually those appointed members start appointing other members. So it's a succession of appointees appointing other appointees. Which is completely anti-democratic and aggressive and always results in the worst candidates being chosen. So not only should we acknowledge these things, also acknowledge that straight-to-go voting is also what's holding a lot of people in their seats. But we need to work to change that, so you can actually vet your ideas and prove that yours are better. Yours are more central. Anyway, so these fringe issues being centrist issues in Ypsilanti, that should not be a surprise here. So looking at the conditions of the world that we are facing, tonight is a seasonably warm night in Michigan winter and very well may be the coldest winter for the rest of our lives. There were more murders by the hands of police in 2022 in the US than any other year prior. And there are more homeless and housing insecure residents in Ipsy than ever before. Under these conditions, the far right is, their messaging is gaining steam. And it is taking hold largely because on the centrist or centrist left wing, we keep kind of trying to find some sort of middle ground, and we are actually incrementing and appeasing autocratic values, fascist values. Values that do not center the majority of residents, especially marginalized residents. So I just say that we have to ask ourselves why incrementalism and tinkering is the only way, especially when those increments and the rhetoric around the things that we want to talk about is always in service of privatization, is always in service of development at the expense of capital interest. So what you do tonight, it will reflect on what you actually hear about, you hear about the concerns in Ipsy, you would go for me, if not, it'll be obvious.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council in the audience? If there's anybody online.
Currently, there is one hand raised. Attendance virtually, George Haggenhour, and I'll allow them to speak now.
Thank you, thank you. I'm basically here in support of Ashante. Who basically, I got interested in as a candidate because what I saw in Ward 2 was a lot of focus on citywide issues, not a lot of focus on day-by-day stuff within the ward. And I did hundreds and hundreds of doors for her, and basically what I found was this was exactly that same type of feeling amongst a lot of the people who are homeowners on the, on the far east side. So basically, I thought that was really important, that we have someone who is really listening to people and willing to act on that. But I'm here also to talk about an interesting larger issue that I was surprised wasn't discussed as part of the process as you reviewed the candidates, and I hope will be on your long-range or short-range planning for the year. And that is that 220 North Park has not been built yet. And that process is going to be really rather impactful on the neighborhood, and it's going to take a whole lot of work on the part of presumably the councilperson, I mean, we're talking about probably 100 to 200 semis loaded with material coming down essentially to dead-end streets. We're talking about 50 to 100 people probably on a daily basis working on the site at various times. They're going to need places to park, there's going to be a lot of coordination there. How, we have people who basically are probably going to be ending up with emergency medical care within the two, two or three block area. We've got what we already know as Michigan basements that could be stressed. We also know from, from people who've been looking at their, at the pipage that comes from the city sewer into our, into their properties, that a lot of those are in low, really bad shape. So if this is going to actually work, there's going to need to be a lot of tuning in to especially the targeted blocks. And that's going to end up on the back of the council, and we can't, councilperson for the ward, or two councilpeople for the ward. And we can't go like we've done the past couple of years where we have people who are not focused on the ward or who just aren't answering phone calls at all, which happened a lot in the past several years. We've got a new person in, Desiree, we need another person who's going to be working with her. But both of them have to be working hard, not just on the nice big issues, but on actually implementing 220 North Park. That's an important project for the city. If something goes wrong, that's going to be a really major headache for the city. So I hope the people who are running are actually thinking about what they're actually going to have to do. It's not just going to meetings, it's going to mean going in and doing some doors and doing some really serious work in terms of figuring out how you're going to do, do communication. We also have seen with smaller local rehab projects within the two or three blocks that there are people who basically target those places for thefts. So there's going to need to be a certain amount of communication about that between the people within the blocked neighborhoods and the developer and the city in terms of understanding what's happening and putting a stop on it if it starts happening, because there's so much stuff available new to steal. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope you make the right decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
Colton Ray has her hand raised, I'll allow them to speak now.
Hi, my name is Colton Ray, I'm a resident of Ward 3 in the city of Ypsilanti. I've attended EMU since 2018, and I've lived in Ypsilanti since 2020. Rent is going up by almost 18% at my apartment complex. But if I renew my lease, I get the bargain of only a 10% increase. We have what Amber Fellows calls it, a landlord monopoly in Ypsilanti. Residents are facing the persistent and illegal practice of discrimination based on their source of income. And I believe that Amber will work with the rest of city council to enforce the non-discrimination ordinance, which is supposed to protect tenants. It is important to note Amber's decisive role in the creation of that ordinance and their countless hours of unpaid labor to make social equity a reality. It is my hope that Amber and city council will continue to advocate for the development of affordable housing. I also believe that city council should promote the development of community land trusts and lobby state officials to overturn the statewide ban on rent control. I want to thank Amber regardless of the results of the vote tonight or the appointment process for their dedication to, in solidarity with other human beings and living things. Amber has inspired me to continue fighting for a better world, which I've had trouble imagining lately. Unfortunately, I think many of us have. This despair can easily manifest and show itself in violence. I think most commonly to ourselves, but which extends to impact those around us. I envision Amber working with city council to develop a robust, trauma-informed unarmed crisis response and de-escalation team. And I envision Amber working with the people of Ypsilanti themselves to determine what community enrichment, community care, and community control of public safety looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to make comments, please raise your hand now. Mayor.
Thank you, I'm Cheryl Barber, I live at 214 North Huron Street, and I am excited to see all the new faces on council, it's my first time down since the new council seat. But this is a really important decision that you're making tonight, who will represent us in Ward 3? Because we're not in a position due to timing to vote on that person ourselves. And I hope that all of you have read carefully the information that you got from each of the people who submitted applications, because it's, it's really important going forward. The cities that kind of crossroads, last year was the first year with a deficit budget where you actually planned, the previous council planned a budget that required dipping into the rainy day funds. The rainy day funds were, are there because of previous councils that put them there. And we want to make the days as less rainy as possible, so you're going to have to be really thinking hard about the budget. There's so much going on in the city at all times, there's just so much to keep track of. So it's a big job, and I applaud you all for your willingness to do it. And I'm here on behalf of Ashanti Harris, I hope you'll give her your consideration. In the time that I've known Ashanti, which is just in the last year, I find her to be a very smart, thoughtful woman. She is quick to go look things up if there's an issue she's not as familiar with, to ask a lot of questions, she listens well. And that's really important for everyone in council for every meeting. Because we all come from different backgrounds, we therefore have different perspectives. And the best decisions are made when everyone expresses their views at the table and everyone else can listen to everyone else and therefore come to some consensus on what's the best way. And I will tell you, in my almost 12 years as mayor, there were any number of times when I thought I knew how I wanted to vote on an issue. And then after hearing from some of my other council members and their perspectives, I changed my mind. And you will too, if you're listening. And that's a good thing, and others will when they're listening to you. So be collaborative, stay positive, and I'm hoping that the decision you make will be a really good one for Ward 3, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Being none, we'll close audience inspection. So next on the agenda is the actual Ward 3 appointment. Clerk or Mr. Bar, can you give us direction on how you vote for the city?
Well, this would just be by motion and then a vote on that motion.
Mayor President Lokaxin.
Election nominee, Gavin Sweet, for the position for Ward 3. Councilperson.
Second. All right, so discussion. Thank you, thanks for everyone who came out to share your thoughts and who shared things up to this point. So I just want to start by saying that this process sucks. This is my third position in the process for doing an appointment, and they've all sucked. No amount of public support in person and through email has mattered. Experience being in council, coming to meetings, et cetera, hasn't mattered. It always comes down to what the six people sitting up here want. Or often what they don't want. We can also, for folks to know, change this in our city charter. I did an unofficial poll that about 90 people I did an unofficial poll that about ninety people, people responded to with over eighty percent of folks from the ward. It really shows that no one candidate has all of the support of the ward. And that at least three of the candidates have very specific sources of support. And sometimes these supporters are sometimes at all. People communicated via email, in person and shared strong reason for and against candidates. Based on their experiences, feelings and information that they gathered during the interviews. We also have the most recent election to consider. I have to give a shout out to the one thousand six hundred eighty-two people or about seventy-five point eight seven percent of Ward Three that elected me just in November. I believe a majority of those votes were for things that I ran for on my platform, which were. Things like expanding engagement and care based safety and improving housing affordability and accessibility here in the city. Two of the candidates were also on the ballot. Ashanti Harris earned five hundred and twenty-six votes or about twenty-three point seven three percent of Ward Three. Amber Fellows earned one thousand two hundred and one vote. Votes are about seventeen point six four percent for the city. For Ward Three, she earned five hundred and twenty-nine votes. Or about twenty-three percent of those who are voting for mayor for in Ward Three. Of course, some people would have voted for both Amber and Ashanti. But it shows that each were able to show that there was support from them from the voters of the ward. Based on our platform, platforms and work together. Amber is definitely much more closely aligned with the issues that helped to elect me to this. So as I think about what pulls together my decision for this vote. Because I don't take it lightly that we are making a two-year appointment. That will make someone an incumbent, which will make them more likely to be, to be able to win an election in two thousand twenty-four. Through an appointment process. And so I just wanted to kind of share that out with folks to understand. Where I'm coming from with this, well, thank you. Thank you, other members of council.
But also like I think of all the other candidates that came in and have been willing to work for the city and do work for the city. And to put their hat in the ring for this position. I came to the. Came to know, I've been over the past couple of years and working with the Parks and Rec Commission and. Think that he's a solid person for this, this position, I think other people have, have many attributes that are, that are. Would be good for this position as well. You know, his work on, on the Parks and Rec Commission, his work with here on the Water State Council, which we've interacted with. Was in good standing as well, he's. Experience in, in city governments around this area, in Canton, his work with the commissions here and working in other communities in, in Washington County. I think one of the best and have, have given him a perspective on how government works. Now, thank you for the, the polling. That's pretty cool.
Thank you, any other council members have comments or questions? I also would like to thank all the applicants before we move on to voting on this motion. And really echo a lot of what Miracle Town Will Cox has stated about Evan Sweet and the experience that he also brings. To the potential role on council. And again, I just thank folks for wanting to participate in this way, it is a difficult job. And it's honorable that anyone would applaud it to even fill the seat for two years on city council. So if there are no further comments, questions, anything, I'm just giving folks an opportunity.
I just think we've already, with the rate that this, this process does. And, and you know, we've gone through a lot of. And I got here through an appointment for two years. We've had other appointments, they're in off cycles, the timing of these don't lend themselves to getting the ballots, they won't. We ran into this with the mayor. You know, we were threatened to be sued because of that and so. That is definitely something that needs to be addressed in the charter. That has been on my hold for the past couple of years is to get the charter. Committee together to, to realize that, you know, the position of previous mayor. Left us all wanting, there were so many gaps in the charter that shows in how that would work. You know, getting rid of the partisan elections, we're one of only three cities in the states that do that. And that is something that you're looking.
Thank you. There are no further comments or questions, Clerk Corlindo, please.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson? Councilmember Dee Simmons?
No.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yeah.
Councilmember King?
No.
Mayor Protown Will Cox?
Yes.
The four yes and two no in motion carries.
So thank you and congratulations to Mr. Evan Sweet. You are the Ward Three council member and I think you come up on Google Office Office right now. So congratulations.
Raise your right hand if you'd have for me. I state your name.
I have a sweet.
Everybody except the office of.
Everybody except the office of.
Ward Three council member.
Ward Three council member.
And further.
And further.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
And that I will enforce the laws of the United States.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the city of Ypsilanti.
And the ordinances of the city of Ypsilanti.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Yes, you're free, the chance to get up to there. So next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Monica Prince and Bruce Ashwell. I thought I was at, did I, oh, good, thank you, on senior center.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for. Anything else? I may have to change up my mask, my voice is not carrying. Many of you know me, but since there's a new council, many of you don't. I'm Monica Prince and I'm the director at the Ypsilanti Senior Center on Congress Green. I have been there now for sixteen years, almost sixteen years, it'll be sixteen years in March. And we just wanted to give you an update of what's going on and also what's in the forefront of things that are happening there. In nineteen sixty-one, the city of Ypsilanti opened the Little House. As a gathering space for older retirees. That at that time was an innovative idea. There were very few senior centers in the United States. But since then, the evolution of the senior center has served older adults. In the area to give them a more fulfilling life. Intergenerational activities have always been part of that evolution. There's been times, one of the times was just before I started working there. There was an intergenerational project that helped. Keep the senior center going for about two years. And it was a grant that was given to Eastern. Then they worked with both Park Bridge and the Senior Center. Now we're sort of going into a new phase that. During COVID, the center relied on much help from the younger population. To keep the older population safe, bad and socially active. When it came to the forefront, that technology was needed. To keep the older adults socially active. We partnered with the students at EMU to provide tech instructions for seniors. This program helped older adults obtain laptops. And the instructions they needed to use them. And a lot of times, one-on-one instructions were very important. It also provided a valuable experience for the students. They were able to relate, they, they were all OT students, so they use their occupational. Background and the things they learned in school were able to be used in a very practical way. And this, this program actually is continuing, it's under a different grant now. But it is still going on and probably hopefully go on. Long in the future. Last year, the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. Gave us a planning grant to work towards establishing the center as an intergenerational hub in the community. We work to establish partnerships. That will help carry on this mission and develop a new way of thinking as we plan our activities. This year, the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. Along with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Foundation. They've given us a three-year grant to implement this work in intergenerational activities. One of the things we're going to be able to do is hire. A program coordinator will be able to oversee a lot of this work. And it will also extend our hours to accommodate intergenerational activities after school hours. You all received handouts of different things of. The different things that we're going to be doing and Bruce, who is a consultant of mine. He's been working with the senior center for four, four years. And he's from Generations United, which is helping us form a lot of these activities.
Thank you to the council and to the mayor, congratulations and. And also as awkward and as sucky as this process at the time, it should still really. Be good to be here and see people making decisions that matter and I appreciate the time being here. I'm gonna take this down because it makes it hard to talk, but. As Monica mentioned, I've been working with the Senior Center for four years. I have a history of working in government, I have a history of directing national nonprofit organizations and local nonprofits. And I've also worked in philanthropy, so I come at this from a lot of different perspectives, but the common denominator is that I've been working on children. Family and aging issues in particular and have looked and worked on those at all different levels. I've been working in Ypsilanti because of this initial grant. Which helped to bring in some really important resources to sort of get this work off the ground. Monica mentioned that there has been a history of younger and older populations working together. And we were looking for a community that would really be a good place to try this out in both small ways and large ways. We were successful in bringing in some initial money and we, Monica mentioned, we just got some written. We're trying to do a lot more. And I would welcome, just in the next few minutes, an opportunity to explain what we think we can do. A lot of that is detailed more in some of the handouts and we can also follow up with conversations. But in general, it's asking the city and asking the council. To take some fairly modest steps, which really won't cost anything initially. And maybe if we're doing our job well, it won't cost the city a lot down the road, we'll be able to bring in outside resources for a lot of this work. But we do need certain things to take place. Number one, we need the city to become an active champion with us on these issues. If we go to funders, if we go to outside sources and we're able to tell people that there is. Some resources, but there's also support, there's community support, there's city support, there's support across the sectors. This makes it so much more possible to get resources. And we've been given feedback from a lot of people and we've been given resources from a number of people, as Monica mentioned, that already indicate a strong interest in this. So if the city can get on board in terms of being supportive of this work. And they've actually taken some very small and important steps to show that support. But if they can be a partner with us, that would be terrific. There's a couple of different ways that they can do that, one is to be an age-friendly city. That's something that AARP is involved in, but it would be a, a statement. There's other ways just to be supportive of current intergenerational work. As well as, like I said before, a real champion for, for work that's upcoming. And I want to end with some of the work that's upcoming and also ask if there's any questions. We gave you the materials, which was a lot to look at and appreciate you at least considering those, but if there are questions, I want to leave a couple of minutes for that. Right now, the work that Monica set, sort of set the stage for was. To begin to convert the Senior Center into a center that also welcomes and encourages intergenerational work. And we've been starting that work and happy to say that the response has been very positive. We have, Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation told us to dream big and so we did. One of the things that they asked us to think about was, you know, where we really could take this for the city of Ypsilanti. And we thought that there were three things that would make sense. Number one, we thought that converting the center, which has been a senior center into, as I mentioned, an intergenerational center would be one thing. The second thing is that the center itself sits in the middle of Recreation Park, which is seventeen acre park. And a wonderful park, but it could become an inter, intergenerational destination, it could become what we're thinking of as an intergenerational commons. There's some wonderful design possibilities, there's some wonderful ways to engage the community, young and old, families, caregivers. All in having a voice in what that park could look like and what it could do. There's a lot of interesting research, which I won't go into right now, but as a result of the pandemic. That shows public parks have been really important places for people to come and meet and on neutral ground. Places that people feel, especially if they feel welcome. So there's a real possibility to do some things over time in the park. We would like to be, and I think we've got some initial resources to begin the actual planning or designing of that. And we would welcome your support on that. And lastly, we would like to begin to think about and look at. Ways in which neighborhoods could become much more intergenerational by design. I think you've heard interesting stories and, and please, if you will, from people tonight, the aging populations, isolation, the differences. We don't want to pit young versus old, we want to work together with young and old. And so we think that this evolving idea of the center, the commons, and then eventually going out into the neighborhoods in a much more thoughtful way. Would be a really good way for the city to really put itself on the map in ways that I think could help. Individuals, families, caregivers, nonprofits, and really bring the city together, so. I'll end on that note and if there's, if there are any questions. We would be happy to take, whatever time we have, one or two questions and if not, we would be happy to follow up. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Are there questions?
Um, thanks for that. I'm so excited. Um, I'm a big believer in intergenerationality. Um, so just one quick question. Um, well, we've got two things. One is. I'm excited to think about the idea of like neighborhoods by design. Um. I'm, I'm really interested in thinking about building up neighborhood resilience and sustainability. And thinking about the relationships it takes and how we look out for one another, including our elderly, people with disabilities, different things like that. And so I'm definitely excited to learn more about that. Uh, a question I have is just in terms of thinking about the space and as you're thinking about different programming. Whether you see that as a space where current organizations that are doing work in community would be able to. Do some, carry out some of their programming um, that they currently do, but may not have space or location or things like that.
One of the, one of the things we've been working with is especially this past summer. Was to find partners that would like to partner with the Senior Center. Excuse me. I've had a cold since my grandson started kindergarten. But he um. But different organizations, one of the things we're throwing around is possibly having. Um, partners in place where they would maybe um. Like take for example, educate youth would come to the Senior Center. One day a month or two, once a week, something like that, and do programming that would. Um, be both for their kids and for our seniors. And to do activities um. And um, we've, we've talked with the library. They're really supportive of it and. Um, they're one that they have senior activities. They have. Activities for younger people, but they don't have anything that mixes. Um, and so it's just a different way of thinking how we can do that. So.
Yeah, just to add, your, your idea is one that we built into the, the planning thing and it is going to be something we'll be doing, as Monica said. We've got key issues, food and nutrition, um, health and wellbeing. Um, we're going to be looking at caregiving as, as an issue that affects young and old in, in a different way, but still. And we're going to invite um, partner organizations that want to work with us to. Be there and available at least on one or two times a month, as Monica mentioned. To be able to work on issues, not just to talk about them, but to, to launch. Um, initiatives and things that they can do together. So it is very much on our mind. And then the, the second part of that down the road. Is partnerships in neighborhoods and to sort of take that work to do the, to do the work at the neighborhood level.
I just want to thank you for coming. Um, I think um, these ideas are really great and I really look forward to how, you know, we can support. Um, these efforts and kind of work together and move on. I think the intergenerations, that's fantastic and. A lot of great ideas, so thank you.
I just wanted to say I'm too unexpected to even work with the program once they give up. I'm running because I know the aging population is the community is often helping us.
Yeah, one last thing too, which I think is very important is that we think there's a real civic engagement aspect of it that will. Pay benefits to, you know, to the community. It's just, it's a way to get people to work on things that they have in common. And I think it just, it, it's not easy work. Believe me, it's not easy work, but the fact that they're both working on ways to improve transportation or they're both working on ways to improve health and nutrition. Um, things like that. It really can, I think, improve the overall kind of. Energy and leadership and, and just sort of passion in the city. So we're, we're really excited about that.
Yeah. Thank you all so much um, for presenting. I think like everything you said, and especially what Conferent King just said around. You know, getting engaged civically and having us participate. And I think the, the ideas that I read and looked at seem. It, it looks sustainable to me. So hopefully, you know, with our support, because there's a sustainability, sustainability in these. Um, for our ideas and I look forward to seeing how we can support you, you know, to get this going. Um, are there any other comments or any other customers who want to say anything? All right. Well, thank you so much. All right. Okay, so next on the agenda um, is our goal-setting session. So I believe this is. Tonight is the overview of all of the goals that are submitted. And I want to get over to our city managers to get us started. I really am excited.
Do you mind if I present from here or should I go down there? Sure, I mean, you can say it's okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor. I'm so. Um, the purpose of tonight's um, goal uh, session or. Our presentation is basically to give also um, an introduction for our departments. And um, to allow you to hear what they do and what they feel um, are. Goals that they have for their department. So I'll start off by, um, so basically it's just an introduction. Then it's also, we're going to field questions if you have some for us um, at the end. But basically, um, the city charter establishes a councilman to form a government. Where the city, in which the city council is the legislative or policymaking body. Uh, the city uh, council appoints the city manager, which is myself. To serve as the chief executive officer to oversee all city affairs. Um, as determined by the charter. The city manager appoints and removes all department heads and employees, except the city clerk. Prepares and administers the annual city budget and capital improvement plan. Provides for the enforcement of all laws of the city and advises the city council on policy matters. Section five point oh two of this, of the city charter. Um, directs city council to adopt goals, objectives, and budget priorities. To provide direction to the city manager for allocation of resources for upcoming proposed budgets. According to our charter, this must affirm um, by the first meeting of February. So that is why we are, we really are today. The city manager then takes those adopted goals. And is charged with carrying out those goals. And is also charged with providing funding and allocating the proper resources. Creating action steps to make those goals come to fruition. So today I have our department heads here. They're going to give an overview of what they do in their department, what they feel um, are appropriate goals. Uh, moving forward. I will start. And I'll just give a general overview of what the adopted goals were for twenty twenty two. On February fifteenth, twenty twenty two, city council. Um, engaged in goal-setting sessions and made some priorities um. Regarding what we felt were valuable steps for moving the city forward. And as we went through the process, the goals that emerged, the goals that. Uh, received the most consensus. Were um, developed around infrastructure, community. And staff. The adopted goals included development of Water Street. Uh, developing Water Street in the way of having some approved letters of intent. Um, redeveloping some long-term vacant sites. Uh, one being two twenty North Park. And the Angstrom property, opening and restating park bathrooms. Improving roads, implementing road pavement preservation program. And completing the road improvement projects and road maintenance um, as funding allows. A part of the infrastructure goal was to improve our facilities, our own internal facilities. DPS, police and fire. And to create regular maintenance schedules. For these facilities and replacement schedules for facility equipment. Number two was community. That encompassed safety. One of the goals that um. What, that arose and was adopted by council under community and safety was to develop. A crisis mental health intervention and response team. And that was by exploring partnerships. Uh, with the county crisis team, EMU, Ypsilanti and the fire department. All to keep our community safe and to have trained crisis professionals. To de-escalate situations without the presence of armed officers. Number two, under safety and community, was to continue community policing philosophy. Providing police department support in these efforts. And so some of these things we were able to meet. Although we weren't able to continue because we came upon the pandemic. Um, and that's one of them, the continue to, the community policing efforts. Uh, the next one under community was connections. Continue our investment in cultural and community offerings and partnerships. Enhancing access uh, for citizens to arts and new experiences. Community building with new and innovative partnerships. And to increase participation, participation within the community for public meetings. Number three was staff. Development. Implement the compensation study. Adequately compensate employees uh, by using a non-union wage scale. We did come to the fact where some of these we weren't able to. Um, actually keep up with the wage scale, but we needed to decide if we wanted to be um, comparable. To decide what type of organization uh, we want it to be. Implement recruitment and retention strategies, particularly for police. DPS, fire, and for administrative staff. Provide human resource recruiting and selection training. Equip our department directors with interviewing techniques. Create an incentive-based program to retain talent. Establish the progression schedule for those we have. Reestablish parks and rec department. And then the last one was to establish and implement incentive programs. To increase employee morale and to increase salaries to promote employee retention. So these were the goals that were adopted by council of twenty twenty two. These goals came out of. A list of goals from council as well as a list of goals for staff. And then there was a consensus. Of uh, what we all thought we should uh, target. That was important to move the city next line forward. So this year, the goals for the city manager's office are as follows. One, secure letter of intent for water street development. One of our goals last year was to get letters of intent for vacant properties. And we did succeed with the two twenty North Park. And currently we are entertaining. Uh, lots of developers for Water Street. Given that we have been recipients of federal funding to clean up the site. So I'm happy that that's there and that will remain, that will remain one of my top goals. Uh, number two is to hire a police chief. As of September thirtieth, that position was vacated. That position has now been posted. And we do have a timeline um, for filling that position currently of April. This year. Number three, work on the framework for an emergency response team. And this um, is kind of, is, is kind of one of the ones we've already had. But we still know that it's important to have an emergency response team that can deal with uh, mental health issues. We tried um, doing this in the social worker. Uh, we, we were not successful twice as. And so now um, we're looking to, to do it a different way. So it's back on um, as a goal. And so I look forward to developing action steps. That are different from our original ones, which were social work. Increase employee morale and retention. I'm sorry. Continue to support securing funding to complete removal of pandemic, which is ongoing. Increase employee morale and retention. Identify equity and diversity gaps. And last one is to add security to City Hall through capital improvements. So at this time, are there any questions for me?
Any questions and problems?
Yeah, the last one I noticed was also on Reagan uh, list as well. And I was wondering if. That's been, have you engaged in contractors to do that already or?
Um, yes, we have. Um, Bonnie, our DPS director, along with the Reagan and the committee. And with the entries on it as well. Um, we have done some um. Exploring of how we can change our um, entry systems. Um, how we've engaged guardian alarm. Do you mind sharing a little bit of Bonnie? Just a little tap into them?
Yeah, um, I'm working with guardian alarm because there are, this is a vendor for a lot of our alarm systems. Um, they have, and it's not just been staff, the city hall, they've been involved in this process. We also engaged um, inter chief of this. As well to help advise, but we've gone through city hall. Um, with our own eyes that are familiar with the space, but also consulted with various. Employees who work over here with their primary areas of concern. And walk through with outside eyes to identify potential vulnerabilities. We've made some modest improvements already. Um, but we plan to continue that as well. So it's entirely possible that you may see a proposal from guardian on the future. Uh, council agenda.
And we want to totally revving up our entry system. We know now we use a code that we, we want to move to the, 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 the uh.
That jumps out.
Access. And so of course that will um. Requires some complications, but we want to make sure, we, we had a couple of incidents. And we don't want to um, ignore those. We want to make sure that our employees are safe. So that is definitely a priority.
Other questions for the city manager?
So I'd like to report that our next um, goal session will be um, January seventeenth. And our plans for this session will be to dive into council goals as well to see where we overlap, where there is consensus. We will have a facilitator available. And we'll see um, how we can develop a path to move forward. We will see what it will cost so that these funds can be allocated if they were to be adopted. And you know, how is your fight over time as well? So I'm happy to have my staff here with me. Um, and I want to congratulate them for steering us through the pandemic. Um, they've done a great job. I want to thank them because they remained faithful, although we had to do some working through um. We had to do some virtuals, some, some, some telework or whatever you want to call it. And so it's, 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 it's kind of plunged us into another phase of um. Of employment and it's, it's forcing us to move forward and to create policies. That will even make us more attractive to people. So I want to thank our employees um. If you don't mind, let's give my hand, our employees. If you don't mind, let's give my hand, our employees. I want to thank um, thank you to them. And so this time, um on your um agenda, there is a list that they will come forward. And I just want to ask them to come forward in that in that uh order. So after me is the city clerk and then just proceed as you go.
Well, thank you so much.
Uh good evening, council. Um so to give you a brief overview of our department, uh the clerk department manages five budgets for voter registration, the administrative hearings bureau, insurance clerk, and then city council. The clerk department acts as the first point of contact for city hall. We are the the first line that people call to get directed to other lines. Uh we deal with people as they come in the door. We try to always provide exemplary customer service. I come from a customer service background. And we we try to be empathetic and understand that often when people are attending city hall, they're not doing so for uh positive reasons. The city clerk also acts as the keeper of the city records and the city seal. This uh is um all ordinances, resolution minutes, contracts. Uh and then we manage the retention schedule of all those documents. The administrative hearings bureau court administrator. So but in that, we manage all case files, create dockets, staff works with uh issuing departments to ensure the the dockets are created properly and if the citations were completed properly. We manage liens for non-payment of judgments. And then we assess those unpaid judgments liens as special assessments of the tax bill. Uh for boards of commission, we manage all applications of city boards and commissions. We're keeper of those minutes as previously stated. We maintain the master list of board of commission. Uh we manage the icompass legislative management software. And then we work closely with department staff liaison to make sure all noticing is done correctly. For insurance, we do submit the yearly applications and then work closely with departments for any change for that insurance year. And then we also accept and file all incident claims with our insurance company. For the many permitting, we do probably the 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 top three are marijuana facilities, peddler and solicitors and bed and breakfast. And then, of course, the clerk department acts as a clerk to city council. Under elections, this is just a a minor list, but we we manage all registrations. Uh we manage noticing required by state law. We maintain the permanent absentee list. We send uh absentee voter application ballots and other notices as required. We test and maintain all voting equipment. We prepare all supplies to deploy with to the precincts. We hire election inspectors, create precinct rosters, coordinate with DPS to deploy equipment, coordinate precinct setup teams and organize and organizations housing pulling locations. And then, of course, we are there for trouble day, uh election day troubleshooting and then to aid in the receiving board. My top three goals uh this time, I'd like to modernize our record retention strategies. I'd like to work with the Michigan archives and digitize our records that are currently held in the basement just to uh ensure their permanent status. It 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 it's 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 on the city to make sure that those those documents are are maintained forever. Um another issue that uh was just recently passed in November, especially the nine days of early voting for proposal twenty-two dash two. I've had a couple of meetings with other clerks in the county as well as uh the county clerk's office. And we discussed potentially having some MOUs between other jurisdictions so that we can house maybe one eastern county uh early uh nine days of early voting. I just want council to be prepared that this is going to be a high resource impact. I reviewed the both the House and the the Senate uh fiscal agencies and they're projecting around thirty-five thousand dollars in addition to what we already pay for the nine days of uh early voting. Plus, this also means that clerk staff will be working nine, ten-hour days before we have a twenty-hour day on election day. And then I'd also like to enhance uh efficiency of the AHB. I would like to work with a software company to develop something that communicates with the BSNA software so we can minimize human error. Uh some years ago, we went to a document creation software, which was leaps and bounds better than what we had. But I I think we could do a little bit better and make sure things are done a little bit more. Instead of having to check things five times, you could just check them twice. And that is all I have. Any questions or you can save them to the end if you like?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Reagan, the finance director and treasurer for the city. And I will be uh introducing our uh team members and give you a brief uh um our department functions and our twenty twenty-three goals. So uh under our department, we have three divisions. We have our accounting department, assessing and treasury division. Under accounting, we have our accountant who handles our payroll. We have our accountant who handles our accounts payable. And we have our finance journalist who uh assists our accountants. We also have our contract assessor under assessing, um Miss uh Mark Gordon from WCA. And at the treasury, we have our finance journalist who is our generation. Some of, some of our department functions are for treasury and assessing. Uh we handle assessment of property values. We also collect property taxes and other city revenues. And we invest uh our surplus funds. Under finance, we do budget preparation and monitoring. So we make sure that uh we do not overspend what um the council has authorized us to spend. We process our payments to vendors for our services and goods that we use. We also process uh the compensation of our employees. Record all financial transactions and prepare our annual comprehensive financial report. And we also serve as the liaison during the financial money. Here are our department goals. Next slide please. Thank you. So um there have been a lot of municipalities that have been um victims of cyber attacks. So what we want to make sure is that we will have a risk-free and secure environment for our financial transactions. We'd like to have cybersecurity training for our employees. Also, we've had some aggressive residents and guests in the city. So we'd like to have, we'd like to save our employees, the city assets and facilities, I believe, uh city manager has already discussed it. And also, we want to make available to our customers and residents the option to pay on online payments for for all the payments that we have. So currently, we do accept online payments for taxes and parking. But we'd like that to be available for any kind of payment. And that's it for us. Thank you.
Thank you, I am. Any questions on sodium or or on this? Alright, great.
Good evening, council. My name is John Barr. I'm the Ixolani city attorney. The city charter has been mentioned this evening. The city gets all of its power from the state of Michigan through the Home Rule Cities Act, which allows us to have a city charter. Our city charter is our constitution. The city charter sets out three charter officers for the city. The city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about the office of the city attorney. City charter says talks about the legal officer. The legal officer shall serve as the chief legal advisor, the council, the manager, and all city departments, offices, agencies, and to represent the city in all legal proceedings and shall perform any other duties prescribed by state law, the charter ordinance or resolution. So in the written material, I've laid out some of the other things that we do. We act as the FOIA coordinator. We do all the prosecution for the city. We prepare contracts, we review contracts, we give advice to all of the city departments, the city council, the mayor. And we have a very close working relationship with all of the departments in the city. We touch almost everything that the city does in one, one way or another. We are the chief legal officer or chief counsel for the city. And over the state of Michigan, there are two types of city attorneys. There are in-house and out-house. So I'm an out-house attorney. I'm a contract attorney for the city. I have my office blocked down the street. And I report to the manager, of course, the mayor and the council. So the the uh our staff. I'm the city attorney. Jesse O'Jack is the deputy city attorney. He does most of our prosecution, works very closely with the departments and the police department. Jennifer Ely is our longtime office manager and serves as deputy FOIA coordinator. Um Ashley Roberts is an office assistant, Tim McBack in our current legal, and Elizabeth Taylor is our finance officer. I put a lot of other stuff in the material. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Barr?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Hey, good evening, city council and mayor. Good evening, all of you. I think we can uh go through uh the slides pretty quick here. Um every year, the DDA uh board of twelve points or adopts their own strategic priorities and their own goals. And I bring those um to city council. And hope that there's consensus and hope that we're going in the same direction. And usually we are. And that relationship has been really strong over the last few years. Um our most recent strategic goal setting yielded six key priorities. One was to complete an equity needs assessment. We have a contractor for that, Sharona Simmons. Um she's been great and we have um created the equity committee designed to work through some of those questions about how resources are allocated. Um and making sure that we're identifying gaps and that we um or ways we can improve. And doing stakeholder interviews, surveys, and we're just at the beginning of that process. So um we'll have more to share. I'm really encouraged by it. It gained the most votes of our board members. So it's top of mind right now. Um community health is another one, uh second most votes. Talking about things like the overnight warming center, daytime warming center, the DDA has been um I think instrumental in helping support both initiatives of the last few years. And public safety is a huge priority, particularly in downtown. Um where we're really invested in trying to find uh solutions outside of policing to help address some of the long-term systemic issues that affect downtown businesses, residents and visitors. So we're continuing to work on that and identify as a key priority. Um feedback please. Uh three is our downtown tip for now. We've got a tip plan which covers everything that the downtown DDA does um coming up in just a few years. And so we want to get ahead of that and ensure that the important work happening in downtown I've seen um is allowed to continue and to foresee the future. Um board is grant support for businesses. We uh put a hundred thousand dollars into solar projects in downtown this year. And that's a major investment. It's going to greatly um improve our watts per capita, which is already a really impressive number. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I would say we bumped up a few spots. Um largely spurred um by the grace of meaning inheritance, how that's been able to help residential um property owners. And so oftentimes, we'll see something at the city level. Try to think that I try to compliment, and that's an example where we've been able to put new money. Um of course, we do building facade rehab projects, and that's a core element of what the DDA does and has done historically. Our um historic building stock is beautiful and helps make us a divided community than we are. But it takes investment and it doesn't come free or cheap. And it often requires public dollars um to activate those vacant or underutilized spaces, particularly when they haven't been maintained. Um lighting improvements, big one. We've put alley lights downtown and then several other places like the People Town Plaza. Both the public safety and aesthetic improvement. We want to continue to work on. And then six is streetscape improvement. The downtown hasn't had a major streetscape project in about twenty years. And it shows there are trees destroying sidewalks and creating a real nightmare for business owners who are responsible for making aimless sidewalks at their own expense. So the DDA wants to capitalize on this opportunity with more financial resources to invest in the streetscape downtown. So again, it'll be around for many, many um years to come. So those are the big key priorities. If you have any questions, folks, what does the DDA do? Um we especially look at it district by district. Um in twenty twenty-two, key projects included Explorer Hipsie, a program designed at getting um new students at EMU out into the business district. It was really, really successful. Um and we managed to spend just a little bit of money to get almost a thousand new visitors into um down to into West Cross businesses. So that's a program we ran um with the West Cross tip. Um about eighty percent of our expenses are outlined here. So if you have questions about what we do, chances are it's contained on this list. Uh building facade rehab grants, agreements with the city, um streetscape maintenance, landscaping, holiday lighting and maintenance every year, except this one we've done. Um lighting at the water tower, folks have really enjoyed that. Um and then special event contributions. So that's a hundred and three thousand dollars of roughly a hundred and thirty or forty. Uh West Cross has a study here, really. People Town, um different story. Uh People Town has saved the last few years a third to half of its fund balance or of its annual revenues every year in hopes of addressing the parking deficit, which I'm sure almost everyone is familiar with, even uh those who have only served our council now for a while. Um and so they don't do the same types of projects. The money that they spend on each of these projects is reduced compared to the other districts. And they're outlined here. Uh most of it is contractual agreements with the city, um the city admin services, the IGA, and then for accounting and financial services. Discussionary uh spending is pretty limited to holiday lighting and maintenance, landscaping, warming center contribution. Um and then some tip projects. But again, those have even done parking related parking studies, parking deck study. You know, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's the story about People Town and where we spent our money there. And then in downtown, um this is really the biggest of the districts by far. Um there's a lot more money to spend in downtown and we spend it wherever it slays. And actually, a hundred thousand dollars in solar grants, um building for salary, having the thirty thousand overnight warming center, twenty-five tip projects, twenty-four. Uh building this time rehab grants, let's mention twice, sorry, the first one is the right one. Um waste management, twenty-two thousand. So we operate all the downtown dumpster enclosures. Use the money on landscaping again, special events, very incredibly popular in downtown. Uh and many of the things that we've come to enjoy about downtown um are primarily the responsibility of the DDA. Very, very little happens uh to bolster the lives of residents and business owners outside of what the DDA is able to do uh with limited financial resources. And so we're really proud of that work. I think there are a lot of ways people um appreciate downtown without recognizing that work is happening at the DDA level. Um and I'm happy to share more information about what we've been up to, um where our priorities are, and probably can align those priorities with what the city wants to accomplish.
Any questions from the other side? Alright, well, thank you. Next we have Mr. Duarte.
Uh I do apologize as well. I kinda went uh into the PowerPoint and created like seventy-two stars. So I had to kind of narrow the dial if that's possible. So please forgive me. Um just a quick overview, real quick of the human resource department. Um specializing in development and implementing strategic plans. Uh we are focused with diversity, uh compensation benefits, retention, training and development. Um the successful employee communication, managing employee performance, uh employee assessment, safety and health at workplace. Um I know some of them may not be on the slide following your presentation. Do a follow-up as well. But um our main focus um is going to really be to optimize um on efficiency. Um, to inquire, to develop and retain. Uh, my first year here, I heard a lot of department heads and people around the city said that this is a stomping ground. Uh, this is just a temporary, uh, position that we tend to go. Uh, they say you could build a foundation and go somewhere else. But we continue to keep that mentality. We will always have a revolving door and we won't truly be able to retain our employees. So my main goal is to make this a wonderful work environment. Uh, so continuous improvement is going to be really key. That's going to include processes, just going to include training on our department heads. Uh, soft steel train, uh, conflict resolution, et cetera. Um, to really focus on building a career path as well. Um, career development, allowing someone to start from an entry level, to give them the steps and the tools and then information and training that they'll need in order to succeed. Uh, and yeah, in order to, um, succeed in their particular role. Awesome. So, uh, we can stay here for just a quick second. Um, so I'm almost done because there was so much. I do have full presentation for those who are interested in it. Uh, we want to implement a KPI. Uh, for those who may not know what KPI is, it is a key performance indicator. It is a wonderful tool to use to gauge employment satisfaction, um, to engage retention, uh, to take a look at the compensation and benefits and et cetera. So we want to make sure that we are able to bridge the gap in productivity. So I know our city manager has talked and spoke about telecommuting. So making sure that we are staying productive and creating these policies and holding individuals accountable. Uh, for those who are in need of working remotely. So we want to make sure that we align our workforce with the business goals. Um, and also, um, having our employee performance review. That's going to be really, really key. We want to implement a three sixty review. For those who may not understand what the three sixty review is, is when the employee uh, reviews themselves and then they take that information back to their department supervisor and then they sit down to discuss uh, the pros and cons of what was being shared at that particular moment. So we want to implement a three sixty review that we can play with our compensation. I know when I first started, we did a compensation study and, uh, we're doing our best to push that agenda um, to make sure that we are staying competitive. Um, and that is pretty much it from the HR department. Those are our goals. We want to focus on retention. We want to continue to focus on continuous improvement and processes. And we also, uh, want to make sure that we are providing training uh, for all of our particular staff. That way we see those individuals that come in. We are properly handling conflict resolution. Uh, and then we even work with we're trying to work with the police department, um, for a lockdown situation. So we are prepared to handle things that may come up in City Hall. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Next we have Bonnie Westmore. I'm hoping they have your management to keep all these sort of my pictures.
There's no chickens.
All right. Well, everybody, I'm Bonnie Westmore. I'm the director of Department of Public Services. Um, next slide, please. The department is made up of up to about twenty-nine people, myself included. There's a general superintendent who oversees a lot of the field activities. Underneath them are two general foremen who then, uh, supervise the activities of the various departments underneath them, including fleet services. Our streets department, which are division, which oversees routine maintenance, potholes, trees, stormwater, fun stuff like that. Environmental services division, which handles solid waste. So that's, um, yard waste and recycling pickup. Then that team also interfaces with our trash pickup, um, contractor Stevens. And our traffic services division, which oversees our signals, our signs. Um, everything sort of in that milieu. Uh, we have a parks and facilities group. They also handle apartment attachments for our code enforcement team. And fleet services, which is our motor pool, is service the vehicles of the DPS and other departments that's needed. And then, of course, we have the administrative staff and the parking and project managers. Overall, currently we have, uh, six vacancies, five of which are our crew that actually does the work. Um, so hearing everybody talk about engagement and retention and recruitment is very important to my department. Next slide. So talking a little bit more about our responsibilities. So we do right-of-way management. So that is the streets that belong to the city. We also interface with MDOT. Um, on the front lines that run through the city, Washington County Road Commission on some of the border roads. Uh, and even MDOT rail from time to time, especially when it comes to crossings. Um, within those rights of ways, we manage permits, there have been storms, so the freeze, uh, the roads themselves. Traffic, storm sewers, street lighting in the parks. We manage the maintenance. We help, um, with the adoptive park and the special events. And it's all like, uh, waste management. We manage the trash contract, the recycling, yard waste composting. Uh, what a lot of people don't realize is that a lot of these fields are very heavily regulated. So there's, uh, standards from MDOT that we do have to adhere to. And eagle that we have to adhere to. Uh, and oftentimes our work in these areas isn't noticed unless something goes wrong. So we can do everything right, three hundred and sixty-four days of the year, one bad day and, uh, everybody's unhappy, which is fair. These are very crucial parts of the state. Uh, next slide, please. Some of our other responsibilities include facilities maintenance. So City Hall, Police Department, uh, the DPS yard, uh, we've worked with the Great House, uh, Park Ridge and, um, to a lesser extent, the senior center and the pool, uh, to help them maintain their facilities and capital improvements and fun stuff like that. Uh, fleet, so not only maintain vehicles, we acquire them and we dispose of them when they're at the end of their useful life. And the fund administration that comes with all of it. So that's the capital improvement plan, a lot of trans, um, transportation planning. Uh, we do a lot of the actual on-the-ground sustainability work and support the sustainability commission as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission. A lot of transportation funding comes through grants. Um, and so we do a lot of grant management and project management because our projects often span over multiple years. So I limited my next slide, please. Limited the, the goals for the purpose of this presentation to three, as you probably saw on the packet, I have several pages of goals. Um, but my top three are, uh, in the areas of operation administration, rights of way and solid waste. Next slide. Uh, my first goal in operations and administration is to continue to improve that recruitment and retention. Um, our crews, uh, do work very hard, long days, often long weekends and long nights. And so, uh, some of the key things that we believe we need to do is to improve our worker morale and their sense of safety as well as force the actual safety through ongoing and consistent programs. So that's training, that's, uh, morale boosting, things like, um, we have bright orange hoodies now that have the city of its flag on the back. Um, and, uh, Billy, city manager McMoly even has one of those. So that's sort of a team building thing. Um, but one of the things that's really key about the work that we do because it is so field oriented, it is on the ground, it's hard physical work. We can really only get things done what we have to keep to do. It's not stuff that we can usually contract out. Part of that is because of the nature of the work and the regulatory compliance. And part of that, of course, is also a unique contract. Um, which is a great thing. Not saying it's not. Uh, next big goal, uh, with it's to continue to maintain the city's rights of way and the associated infrastructure. Um, so many of our local roads were done in the early aughts. Those are kind of coming to the end of their, their lifespan. Uh, we've deferred maintenance over the years. Uh, but we really need to get on the preventative maintenance horse, so to speak. Uh, that maintenance is better done late than never. We need to extend the lives of these roads as long as we can so that people can continue to use it safely. Um, a lot of our major roads, we're, we're doing a project about every other year because they're at the point where we need to reconstruct them, which is a very major undertaking. We can't simply, uh, resurface them. Uh, we're looking at some other options or the in-between reconstruct and, and resurface, but, um, it's, it's slow going and lots of planning and generally need at least three years lead time in order to see any major road project under completion. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, you're already there. And so we want to also continue to provide recycling yard waste and other solid waste disposal services and to improve our recycling quality, quantity. So that's been one of the long-term goals of council, not just this council, but council over the decades. Um, and to that end, we have, you know, over the last year or so, acquired a grant to get larger recycling carts, the ninety-six gallon carts. Those will be distributed this spring. Um, as well as an educational part, but, um, we recently saw something very similar in its surrounding township. It's a very similar grant structure and, uh, we're looking forward to doing that. As those get implemented, however, we also need to upgrade our fleet so that we can better serve those, those carts. Um, and better serve the people who will have to empty those carts into our trucks. Uh, so it's, it's an ongoing process. Uh, we are working as best we can with the fleet that we have, um, but will improve the quality and quantity of our recycling. And I think I had about eighty million of the goals in that spreadsheet. Oh, happy to answer questions. And any questions? We're gonna keep it moving. Thank you, Bonnie. Next we have Fire Chief Hobbs. You have all of the good pictures of him, yeah. I had a really good picture. I'm happy to show it all to you after what's happened.
Can you marry it, buddy? Good movie.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, Fire Chief, it's our Fire Department. So here you have a chart of our staffing. Uh, if you can see it very well, the next slide follows that. Uh, I'm your, uh, myself, you know, fire suppression. Uh, I'm Fire Chief of Fire Suppression. We have three shifts of seven. We have three captains, three lieutenants and five firefighters. We're currently at two vacancies. And we're in the hiring process to fill those two vacancies. So we'll actually end up with three shifts of seven. Uh, each shift works twenty-four hours. If you're worried that's due with council arts and we're not. Under myself, you have, uh, there are fire prevention, who's our fire marshal. Oh, uh, fire marshal's position was pulled approximately two years ago. Uh, he spent roughly a year getting his certifications that are required by the state to be the fire marshal. He is now actively, uh, doing fire inspections and, uh, working with the building department to make sure uh, our building, now we got the building is done through the building department, all inspections, but through, uh, the fire safety and, and fire department. And fulfilling all those ordinances for us. And I have one, uh, other, uh, position at the administration and that's my executive, uh, assistant, uh, listening. I think I pretty much covered that one already. Okay, the fire department provides fire suppression, EMS services, fire station education for the citizens, city staff, EMU campus. The officers work in, they commute throughout the city. The city of Sigha, number of WAMMA, uh, that's a Washington area mutual association. And this provides mutual aid to all the departments in Washington County. There's an incident that requires other departments. Uh, we have, uh, what's been considered a box alarm system and, and it ranges from, uh, one uh, and then told that, you know, from a small fire to a, uh, a flagration of mass incident. So depending on what you have, uh, depends on what resources you'll get, but we uh, pretty much have, uh, access to all fire departments in the county if, if we need them. We also part of, uh, uh, I have an AMA agreement with Ipsley Township and Spirit Township, which solves us to automatically respond to fires in each other's jurisdiction. Well, what this does, this allows us to be compliant with NFP seventeen ten, respond with between fourteen and twenty firefighters, depending on daily staffing. So the next, uh, line on that is, uh, NFPA seventeen ten, which has a single family dwelling is a minimum of fourteen, fifteen of the aerial devices used. The initial full alarm, uh, assignment to a structure by a typical two thousand, but a square foot, two-story, single-family dwelling without a basement with no explosion must provide for a minimum of fourteen numbers. None of us are staffed to do that. Um, if we have a seven on ship, the room staffing of four, we obviously can't accomplish that. And that doesn't allow us to do what we call a two-in, two-out or RIT. And so we have to have established a RIT that's like to make sure the people inside are safe. If something happens, we can rescue them. The only way you can do that is rely on automatic mutual aid with Ipsley Township and Superior so we can put fourteen to twenty people on a fire at a time. Uh, we have, uh, members on the, uh, support. They have members on all the Washington County specialty teams, which it was the advent team, the technical rescue team and the slip water rescue team. We actually, uh, I'm, uh, in the process of, uh, we had one person step down, but I like to have four people on each of these teams. That way if something happens and hopefully they'll have somebody on duty that was able to take, uh, and, and respond from our station on, on any of these calls, whether it be technical, uh, rescue, hazmat or support. Um, one of our goals, um, was to establish and, uh, expand our, our training and our training opportunities. We're hosting an Aggressive Command, uh, class, uh, on January twenty-eighth at the Fire Museum. Uh, and, um, we also require a rescue class in two thousand and twenty-two and we plan that's operations level class. And we plan to follow up this year with a slip water rescue technical, uh, technician class in May. Uh, there's a difference between, uh, someone who's operation level and technician, technician level. We respond to an average of twenty-seven, a hundred, uh, seventy-four calls per year based on last year's numbers. Uh, twelve hundred fire calls, fifteen hundred EMS calls. In two thousand and twenty-two, we are inclined to act forty-seven national fires and one hundred and seventeen fires classified as other, which would include outside fires, dumpster fire, dumpster fires, vehicle fires, et cetera. Fires that we have to extinguish but aren't considered destructive fire, destructive fire in simple terms of they've been in fire. And, uh, our fleet consists of two engines, a tower truck, two utility vehicles, uh, fire teams and fire marshal vehicles and a newly purchased rescue vehicle. Um, we also house the Washington County hazmat vehicle. And, uh, the next slide would be is going to be with the rescue vehicle. So, um, we recently expanded our fleet by purchasing a squad. I, uh, reached out to the city manager, reached out to uh, Reagan, the finance director and Mr. Barr. If, if I could enter to agree with within our township to, uh, purchase a vehicle they were going to replace. Uh, we have, uh, our two engines and our tower. You guys look at the CIO, we always have something out of service. Uh, we budget annually seventeen, seventy thousand dollars in repairs. So in order to try to extend life for our vehicles and to reduce some of that maintenance costs, um, I did purchase a squad and I purchased this vehicle for three thousand dollars. Uh, the equipment, uh, roughly twenty-six thousand dollars equipment on the vehicle was thirty-six hundred dollars. We've had roughly, uh, twelve thousand dollars in repairs and updates on the vehicle. And, uh, twelve thousand for paint and bodywork. You see on bottom, it was red, uh, vehicle from our township. It is now yellow and black. And, uh, Ipsley City, uh, Risk Squad One. The cost of purchase this new vehicle would have been a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's based on what our township, uh, purchased any vehicles that had equipped. And so this was savings of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six, a hundred and thirty, roughly a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Our goals, uh, to reach and retain full staffing, develop and, uh, complete capital improvements. This includes a parking lot repairs, retaining the lot repairs, the fire department. And after this big door, I'm not looking at replacements. I got yesterday I was falling off on that. And to replace those doors is going to be way too much money, but if you want to, uh, update and make improvements, so then we're gonna, we're gonna uh, when we get the capital improvements, I'll have it actually have that priced out. Um, continue to upgrade and make improvements. What is that?
Don't worry about it.
Uh, continue to upgrade and make improvements to my F P facilities. That's always been a goal, to go to the city to improve our facilities. And to identify increased, uh, training opportunities.
Thank you so much. That, that squad. Okay. Saving. We like that. Thank you. Oh, city manager.
I think our chief Uges is ill tonight, so he's not able to be in person, but he will, uh, present virtually. Welcome, Chief Uges.
Good evening.
There we go. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yep. All right. Sorry I couldn't. Excuse me. Sorry I couldn't be with you. Um, so real quick, just an overview, um, of the police department. Um, we provide services to all those who live and work and recreate in the city. Uh, we are on duty three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. Um, over the last three years. Um, over the last three years, on average, we've responded to sixteen thousand seven hundred and six calls per year. Um, we are broken down primarily into four divisions. Uh, the patrol division, uh, which is on duty at all times and is ready to respond to emergency calls for service. As well as non-emergencies dispatches. Uh, we also have the detective bureau, um, which is normally uh, on staff during normal business hours. But they are on call twenty four seven to provide support services to the road patrol. And to investigate any complicated or serious matters. We also have the records bureau, um, which is available at the police department to assist walk in citizens at the lobby. Fill FOIA requests or record requests and they are there Monday through Friday from nine AM to eleven PM. And the final uh, part of our department is parking enforcement. Uh, we have two parking enforcement officers right now and they are working Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM. Uh, this is a basic breakdown of the organizational chart. Normally, the patrol division is broken into four teams. And if we were at full staffing, this is how that they would break out. Um, there would be a lieutenant, a sergeant and three police officers on duty to respond to calls for service. Currently due to vacancies, um, we have, in most cases. A command officer, either sergeant or a lieutenant and three officers on most days at this point. There is the segment for the cop crew, which was the community uh, policing crime reduction unit. Which was recently added. Um, that entire department is vacant. Um, so as you'll see when we get to the goals that has impacted our ability to uh, accomplish some of them. Next slide. So the goals for twenty twenty three um, would be to continue the transition to community beast based policing. Um, however, um, previously that was done through the implementation of the cop crew. Um, and given that we don't have the staffing for that currently. Um, I believe we should make a switch to um, concentrating on the staff that we have. Concentrating their free time on non-enforcement contacts. So non-enforcement contacts are basically um, concentrating our free time um, on things that. Improve relations with the community, conducting foot controls, business checks, citizen assist. Uh, vacation home checks, community events, things like that. Um, that can be done with our current staffing and as we increase our numbers, obviously, we can um, revisit that in the future. Uh, previously, there was a goal for the implementation of a um, crisis response team. Uh, which included uh, the addition of a social worker to the police department. That did not materialize, uh, so a more realistic goal given our current staffing, I believe. Would be to expand our uh, crisis intervention team officers. Those are officers that are specifically trained. It's a forty hour course. Um, to deal with those who are suffering from mental health crisis or in a um, response to mental health issues. Um, currently, we have four CIT trained officers. And as the city develops a wider program to um, decide how. Uh, we should be responding to mental health issues. I believe in the short term and expansion of that program would provide our most bang for our buck. Um, another goal would be to maintain our MACP accreditation, uh, which we received in twenty twenty two. Um, and then the final goal is the replacement of the in car in body worn camera system. Which is a carryover from last year. Um, the goal is to integrate the new in car system into the existing body worn camera system. Which increases transparency and uh, also makes it easier for storage and to fill FOIA requests and retain video evidence. Um, initial goal is um, because mental health is at. The forefront of basically everything that we do. I don't want everyone to forget that the mental health of our officers and our staff is important as well. Uh, in twenty twenty two, the, for the first time ever, um, we required the staff to meet with our police psychiatrist. Um, for a one hour mental health checkup. Um, where they could discuss whatever they wanted um, in confidentiality with um, with the doctor. And I would like to continue that in twenty twenty three. However, um, I'd like to expand it um, to be at least semi-annual. Um, just because it was so well received last time, I feel like uh, concentrating on that would be a great help to our staff. Um, and the funding for the mental health checkups in twenty twenty two was uh, addressed in the H R budget. Um, we actually did not exhaust that, so I would just be requesting that we use the remaining funding uh, to carry forward into twenty twenty three. Excuse me. Um, for the capital items, as mentioned before, the in car uh, body camera system. Um, that's a carryover from twenty twenty two and will continue for five years as it is a five year agreement. And then last, uh, for uh, capital uh, is a addition of two patrol vehicles that are scheduled to be replaced. Um, in twenty twenty two, we retrofitted two uh, police vehicles. That were taken out of uh, patrol and they were uh, redone for parking enforcement use. So we'd like to replace them with two new vehicles. Excuse me.
Thank you, Chief Yugis. Any questions for? All right. Thank you very much. Help me feel better.
Thank you.
All right, last but certainly not least, Mr. Joe Myers.
Good evening, council. I do speak kind of fast, so I'm talking a little fast. I'm trying to get through a lot of stuff and I was told I have five minutes. And so, uh, next slide, so as you can see, the community economic development department really doesn't go into really what we do in in total. Uh, we're broken down into seven divisions, economic development, community development. Planning and historic district, building department, rental inspections, home enforcement, information technology and park facilities. I'm gonna go through brief, that touch on everything you have the presentation, so. And on some of the highlights, um, that that we do go through, um, and that we do every day. Um, and and please, I think you all know, you can reach out to me. I'm I'm gonna talk to anyone of these things. But obviously with economic development, we're developers. Obviously, two twenty one park is, uh, we had a groundbreaking uh, recently and we will be having, uh. We will see a lot more work going on, working on finalizing all permits and our construction meeting will be scheduled for the next week. Uh, to actually see those shovels go physically into the ground instead of in a fake way. Uh, we also are working with uh, the M I H Q uh, company. They are the ones that purchased the immunological business. But again, um. For one, uh, you know, about a hundred, seventy thousand square feet of wet lab space that the city council approved, so we've been actually allowed that happen. As well as a fifty thousand square foot. You have a medical office, so if if any of you go to the medical clinic over on Arnett Street. That will be moving in the next year over to the college of business, which will be much better for transit for anyone who does not have a car. And it'll be a much larger facility and I believe they will also do some imaging, so it's not just going to be a. A doctor's office, they're gonna do a lot more, quite a lot more services. Uh, have a lot more mental healthcare facilities there and really work out of the fourth, fifth and then basement of that building. So we're really excited. It's a way to keep the property in tax rolls, while also providing such a great service that we desperately need. Arnett will be, there will be a transition and then we are working with them currently to help fill that space. So there could be. It's about half of the upstairs of that building that could be vacant from this, but they have released until twenty twenty five. Um, community development, obviously, uh, Christopher already gave all the D B A's goals, and so I don't wanna overshadow any of those. Because those are all really, really huge. Uh, but we also work uh, with the benefits ordinance. Uh, helping to uh, to our community development block grant program, our properties position, the neighborhood enterprise. Zone uh, programs as well as um, seek seeking grants. Next slide. Planning a historic district, obviously, any development that comes to the city. We are the first line of defense for that, and so we we talked to all the residents who want to put up a shed, put out a little addition. Um, or build a house on top of change your windows, uh, siding, paint your house, really. Anything that needs to have to have with your home or your business, we are the kind of first line of defense. We also mail out a lot of notices, so you do have to be a lot of, if you look near some of that's happening or. Uh, building department rental inspections, this is obviously. When you talk about, then you would come for your building permits. Uh, a state law dictates how we issue permits, but we are the with the frontline for all building related issues. Uh, we schedule all the inspections. We're actually at about a one day turnaround for our inspections, which is pretty good. Some cities are at a week to two. We normally can get you in within a day for most of our building trades. Uh, so I'm very, very proud of that. We also inspect all the rentalists. Uh, we provide resources to machine legal services as well as landlords about what our, what our rental code inspection does and. There's times where we are in court uh, with landlords that need to bring their properties up to code or. Um, or to work with machine legal services to make sure that the landlord is communicating to the court that the building they're in is actually. To code or not to code. And so those are a vast array of what we kind of handle with those. We also. There are eight divisions, but I wanna say with all the departments here, I can do anything without every single one of the people that has already went before me. Including the city manager, really, we're we're all a big team and we have. You know, if you hear all the departments, we have twelve full time and three part time employees that actually make all this happen. So, uh. So it's 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 a lot, uh, and we also help Mr. Barr, uh, really on 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 FOIA requests, so. Um, a lot of things, um, there's a lot of aspects to the building department. It is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of code, a lot of which the state requires, some of which the city requires. And we could actually get into all of that if anyone has questions directly on that. Uh, next. Home enforcement, I T and park facility. So this is essentially people are not mowing the grass, they're not shoveling their sidewalks. Uh, they have trash litter building up, blowing up in the neighborhood property, home enforcement, make sure that happens. Uh, that is gonna clean up. By the property owner or the city, the city, we just started working with our. Our public services to actually provide that service, so we can actually see some some easier, uh, so you can actually. Uh, do the uh, abatements is what we're called, uh, much more rapidly. With I T, obviously, I run this computer, the city has a pretty big robust computer system because of our, of our, all of our departments and. So we're tasked with overseeing that, making sure the projects happen, making sure the freight house gets their internet hooked up, making sure everyone. Uh, working, Andrew, to make sure everyone gets their email passwords set up properly. And so, um, we also do these assessments for our facilities, because obviously, as things change. And as we, we have additional needs, um, as we grow our services at Parkbridge, we have to have more services to be provided. Um, last but not least, um. Nope, move back. Our facilities, uh, buying overseas all of the city facilities, however, Christopher. Oversees all of our park facilities like the freight house. Um, and really communicates with the senior center, communicates with the Rutherford School, um, Frehhouse and uh. And Power Bridge, uh, because they all have different groups that kind of oversee them outside of the freight house. Um, and so he oversees all those, uh, works with our DPS to do capital planning. Uh, and then works to negotiate contracts, provide great services like U M S coming in and providing services two months a year. Uh, and uh, I think for most people who worked in the warming center, Christopher was very, very influential, if not imperative to make me sure. So. Now on the next slide, I hope it didn't go over five minutes, I'm sorry. Um, the top three goals we have for our department, I made them broad for a reason. Obviously, it's redevelopment, long, long, vacant sites, the city, uh. First, you're gonna see obviously two twenty of the park within the next little bit and for instance, if city manager recall, I've been dirty. And still uh, thunder a tiny, which you should, uh, as you will be seeing also for Water Street. Um, and and we all also working to make sure Clark Road is developed and working with all of our stakeholders to make sure that happens. Um, as well as, uh, you know, extra a little bit harder and actually, uh, they are dividing the facility. Uh, and actually starting, uh, using about a hundred thousand square foot of the eight hundred thousand square facility. In the very, very, very near future. Um, it's funny, none of the department has really got together and talked about our goal, but I think we all agree that this is twenty twenty three. I've been saying since it was twenty sixteen, when I had my first goals, which is why aren't we taking online payments? This is twenty sixteen, now we're twenty twenty three, we need to pay. For almost everything new, um, I think it's imperative, um, just for all function of government. And then last but not least, we really need to work to modernize our zoning ordinance and the easiest way we can do it is to really work to eliminate parking minimums. And really work to um, eliminate some of the part of housing issues that we have, um, and there's only one that has not to see the act. Stop.
Or any questions for example?
Yes.
Um, this quick que- question, when um, uh, you were saying that there's a one day turnaround for inspections. I was guessing that was for the buildings, but I was wondering what it is for like for the original, like for original inspection.
So we have. It depends. Um, if there's a complaint, obviously, if we get out there within twenty four, forty eight hours. If it's a new building uh, coming in, we now, after rearranging everything at the beginning of the year, we can actually. Um, inspect a brand new rental coming online. Uh, we have three days a month that are set aside for new businesses and new rentals. We don't get a whole lot of new rentals, uh, but they do have it occasionally, and so we wanna make sure that we have some time set aside. So they can be inspected within a rel- uh, uh, relatively easy timeframe. Now, when it comes to. All of the apartments, we're working on all of our large complexes right now. Um, we're also doing some smaller one and tube unit and then some up to twelve unit. Basically, we have things set up to one to twelve unit and then anything over twelve. Uh, so we're working on getting all of the above twelve units done because we, we had gotten everything caught up. Uh, in in twenty twenty, it was a goal of city council, I wanna say twenty nineteen is to get caught up on our rental inspections. We did that and the pandemic came and we wanna hear without inspecting rentals. Um, and let me tell you, it shows. Um, and we have some phenomenal landlords that really maintain their properties throughout the pandemic, but we have some really bad ones that don't. Um, and so, we're working on all of those right now, um. We're hoping to get done with the main complexes within the next six months. Problem is, oh, that's a problem. We have wonderful time inspector dedicated solely to rental inspections. One rental and commercial inspector and then two part time code enforcement officers that we cross trained, working with. We're working with the one city manager to really help cross train them, because back in. May, we had two of the three inspectors retired. And so now we have four people trained to do rental inspections, which is huge. We've been working on training on commercial inspections, um. But really, uh, we have to manage the time properly and scheduling and first city code, we have to give. Anyone who lives within Washington County, fourteen days notice before we can inspect. And anyone who lives outside of Washington County, thirty days or thirty days notice to inspect, so. It's this weird timing, male noticing debacle that we kind of get into, but our goal. They would, is to be fully caught up by the end of uh. At mid twenty twenty four, like caught up as far as everyone's on their two year cycle again, but it did hit us hard. Uh, but we are going actively uh, towards that and any complaint gets first. Like priority and then any health and safety issue, first priority and. Sorry, that was a very long. Answer, but I I think it's important to kind of everyone understand that it wasn't. Uh, but we really hit the building hard. Um, we didn't wanna make our residents feel uncomfortable. Um, obviously, any inspection that happens in 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 a building, uh, all of our, all of our inspectors are masked. Um, and and we really make sure that people feel safe and uh. As they say, I have COVID or I don't feel comfortable, we work with them to figure out what base that they.
Thank you, any other questions for Joe? Thank you so much. Alright, so, uh, city manager. Can you just remind us of what next up the week of goal we'll say?
Absolutely, thank you, our next, uh, goal setting session session, as I said, will be on January seventeenth. Starting at six o'clock PM, and we will have our, uh, facilitator present, who will, um. Have, um, will actually walk us through, uh, the process of aligning council's goals and staff goals. Um, and then facilitating discussion, uh. You know, for moving forward, for us carrying down the priorities and then actually creating some action steps. That, uh, we all agree upon and are able to adapt, uh, by the charter deadline. So that's our next step, we'll learn to do the, we hope to do this in two, two, uh, sections. The seventeenth and Andrew, please remind me of the second meeting.
Uh, it'll be the the twenty four, starting at six o'clock, so in conjunction with a regular meeting.
Right, so this was just because we do have many council members. Um, and also even we deserve refreshers of what we do. Um, we wanted to put out there what we actually do on a daily basis and what we feel is important. And we both count mayor and council, we're taking notes. Um, so that we can align them together, so that's what we are, our next meeting is on the seventeenth at six PM. And our facilitator will be in charge.
Alright, well, we just want to thank all the department heads for your presentations and for giving us some overview, they're really helpful, even for someone who's been here to be refreshed. On things that have been completed, and also thank council for the questions that we did, um, ask, and. We off to the races next week as we meet the facilitator. So now we'll move on to our consent agenda, which I think council member Tucson, you know that.
Resolve of the council, the city, the following item will be approved. Resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero zero two approving the minutes. Approving the minutes of the December twenty two thousand twenty two city council meeting, resolution number twenty twenty three zero zero three approving. Ordinance fourteen oh four and ordinance entitled owning test amendment temporary mobile healthcare establishments, the second reading. Um, and resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero zero four approving the practical vehicle for the use of the fire department from. Gordo four and I saw.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons.
Yeah.
Councilmember J Simmons.
Yeah.
Councilmember King.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Wolcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Resolution number two zero two three dash zero five resolved by the council city's planning. Whereas the city manager refers directly to the city council and supervised by the governing body. And whereas the city council has evaluated city manager McMillan for her performance over the evaluation period. And now therefore be it resolved that the city, if the city council provides accepts the evaluation of city manager McMillan. The movement supported.
Um, so I'd love to say that, uh. You know, this is kind of a completion part of, uh, of, you know, when we do the evaluations, accepting them and, um. Whatever we kind of missed us at the time when we we did it, because. As part of this, sometimes, you know, we may consider it here, you know, we've been trying to establish this kind of process and how we've done this for the last. Um, couple of years, and so I I never think it's a, I guess, a bad thing that's really considered. Um, it was, you know, want to consider kind of that, uh, you know, um, raise or cost of living adjustment. Um, there was some information that was sent the other day, um. They, you know, with some, uh, to everybody to get email, that was some information. So I don't know if ever, if folks have had enough time to, I guess, evaluate that, it's really stupid, and. Um, and so if that's something we want to take up now, or if we want to. Table that for, you know, upcoming future meeting, but I don't want to push that, I guess, down the road if that's something that we're going to consider, so. Um, just kind of giving a little context about the the email, um, with the information, and so I guess, does anyone have any? Special comment at this time, and you know, if you want to talk about that now, or set that aside for a future meeting.
I prefer to say this.
Okay, I did have a quick question, being the, um, the email that was sent, was that the full evaluation? You talked to the email that you got on Monday?
Yeah, no, no, so that's what I guess, I was wondering, maybe, is that something that we still would vote on since we weren't a part of that? So Mr. Barr, can you give us some feedback on maybe, um, what would be appropriate?
Well, what you have to do is is vote your, uh. Best decision, but if you were not part of the evaluation. It would be difficult to accept it, and so you you could abstain if you decided at that time, or if you have information on it, you can vote on it.
Thank you. And I don't, I don't think they're in common under the scene what we completed, but they weren't a part of those actually in the one.
Right.
Evaluation, so. We have four, four people who actually were, well, actually, so Adam, I think you were part, oh. So that's the four, okay, yeah, yeah, but. Right, I understand, I understand, this is. A little delayed in in getting this taken care of, so normally we would completed this with the original folks for private evaluation process. But there are four of us who were present, but the whole part is not of them, so. So is, do we want to set this aside for a future, like, but again, I don't want to take it. Or, you know, to be resolved of what we're going to do, because since we're going into. There's only four people that can move the physical, so what would you do, because I'm asking, you know, of them, well, so.
I need to look at the.
What did I send it to everyone?
I do it, so, yeah, yes, I do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and the information is basically said what council had approved for budget. For performance raises and what that would look like, and what averages it would look like. So I guess, I have a question, um. To the new council members who were not part of that, is this conversation that you're interested in discussing, and if so. Um, you know, we can get you the information and then, you know, chat with you. Or, you know, anyone else, somebody who's there can chat with you. It's like. You know, hey, we weren't part of the process, so we'll kind of leave it in your hands, if you can complete this process, um. That's fine as well, I I went out with this other hand, who's gonna? You know, if we're gonna. Sounds like I don't, I'm not hearing, it sounds like you would like to, you would like information, okay, and then Steve is interested in. She wants to look at the information that was sent. Um, anybody else seventy percent, and like I said, it could be ideal to get this resolved, you know, sooner than later. So I guess my question is, are we talking about two separate things here? Are we talking about accepting the actual evaluation tonight and then waiting to make any further decision, or are we talking about setting all of it aside as together? And doing it all at once, but I do think. We. Well, I think I would like your stuff that we did, that part of it just done. Um, and I think that take up this other thing, but it could be pick a, you know, meeting that you would be comfortable. Having that as a conversation or or not. Does anyone come, you know?
There was a question down here.
Yeah, no, I I was just responding, you know, like, I'm I'm interested, I also, I was planning on abstaining from this call, because I wasn't. A part of being the information on that. Um, but I, in general, am in favor of things like cost of living increases and from the information we saw in the email. It looked like it was within the bounds of what was already set aside and budgeted from council, um, for the different staff increases, so. Uh, in general, I would be supportive of that, um. And, but in terms of the details of the evaluation, I don't have anything really to go on, so.
I can send, I can send that out to you, I'm trying to find a right now, so that you guys have that, and, um. And I'm happy to talk anytime, just, you know, this, we've been doing this the last few years, this evaluation process, but. Um, and as, you know, each year we've been trying to get better at it, we're still trying, you know. Um, formalizing it, so. Um, I'm sorry, so. If you're interested in having this media conversation about.
Just in terms of the period, I can accept this, I didn't.
Okay. Does that sound agreeable to me? Oh, please, you have a chair of this, that's not agreeable to everybody else, for those salary fees anyway, and we'll accept the evaluation, so that means that part of the process is completed. And I would say feel free to understand if you were, if you don't feel comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of this part, but then we could have the next piece of the conversation with the with the information. And as a full value of the point of worth meeting. Absolutely, I agree, I mean, that's probably what I would do, same, just because I was not a part of it, but at the same time, I wouldn't mind seeing the information that. So I can have that information even for the next time, but absolutely.
Yeah, I'll send it to you, I said, I'm looking here, um, I'm. Alright, so it looks like we're gonna move forward on voting on the resolution as it stands. Um, and then to have a conversation about. Additional pieces, pay raises, um, on the twenty fourth. Mr. Barr.
Did you, did you want a, um, draft legislation for that meeting? Did you want an agenda item?
Uh, yes, we should.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to look if you're gonna ask something, or are we just ready for the vote?
Just running for the rule.
Okay, any further discussion on this piece? Alright, seeing them, but please.
Councilmember Tucson. Councilmember D Simmons.
Obstein.
Councilmember J Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King. Mayor Proton Wolcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
The force, yes, and three abstention, the motion carries.
Alright, thank you. Uh, and then Mayor Proton Wolcoxen, you have the next resolution.
Yes, the number twenty twenty three dash zero zero six resolved by council of the city of Ipsilani, whereas the. City clerk reports directly to the city council is supervised by the governing body, and whereas the city council has developed. The way that city clerk Andrew Malanga for his performance over the evaluation period, now therefore be resolved by Ipsilani city council hereby accept the evaluation of.
It's been moved and supported, um, I'm going to assume the conversation is insane, so we can just move forward to voting, unless someone has. Anything pressing to ask or state about this resolution. Alright, oh.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, it's obviously just.
The same thing, yeah, same thing, okay, great. Uh, so, please follow along.
Councilmember D Simmons.
Obstein.
Councilmember J Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Abstain.
Mayor Proton Wolcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson. The four yes and three abstentions, the motion carries.
Alright, thanks everyone, so we'll get the information out, and it's appears to have this next part of the conversation on the twenty four. Um, so we have the next, uh, board commission nomination, so we have Annie Somerville, I wonder who that is. Um, we're coming down to the bicentennial committee, and I'm hoping that someone would be, would hopefully willing to, um. Move to have her appointed tonight so that she can get back to work, um, on the committee, as we also recently lost the chair of the committee. Um, so if anyone is willing to make the nomination, um, and support that tonight, we can vote on it, that would be greatly appreciated. Great, oh, great, yes, for the first, so we can vote on her tonight instead of waiting.
So the motion should be to suspend the rules and vote on, um, the appointment of committee member or soon to be committee member, Annie Somerville.
I would like to name those are the suspended rules and vote on Annie Somerville to be the, um. Even the broken vice in the community.
It's been movement support, any discussion? I, I was, I'm sorry, I'm just appreciative that, uh, news Somerville is willing to continue on in this role, and, uh, you know, and I'm just. Great work, the bicentennial, so thank you so much, I'm excited to have you continue on with that. And, yeah, I thought it was sentiment, thanks for continuing on, you did great work for a new year, and the ball drop around the rest of the committee, and I'm just excited about. All of the other plans for the rest of this year, to celebrate year two hundred, I like saying that. Alright, any other comments or, uh, questions?
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes, which was one.
Sorry, councilmember J Simmons.
Yeah.
Councilmember King.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Wolcoxen.
No, yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember D Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alright, thank you, so we have, um, we're down to liaison report. Uh, we survive the commission. Um, HRC has not met, and this is a priority, like, we need to figure out what to do about this. Um. Arts Commission.
They meet on Thursday.
Meet on Thursday, and I believe, can we pause right there, so. Commissioner Somerville was our liaison, but I believe now.
Or which commission is it?
For arts?
I believe it's arts and parks and records.
You would be vamping, you know. Okay, so you'll be taking arts commission and president.
I'm actually interested in bicentennial as well.
Oh, well, well, you don't have to be on the commission, you can attend and just help, can't you? Does everybody, you have to be on the. We used to have a commission, sorry. We used to have, uh, a year ago, we had one person who could be scored as like a liaison, I remember. So, this word.
Okay.
Yeah, it does. And Jennifer, and Michelle, so wonderful, welcome to the bicentennial. Okay, um, can, just so everyone knows when they need, can you send out an email or? Thank you, um, so, arts, parks, arts meets this week, parks are at commission, has not met, I don't think.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But there is a report, you'll see attached in your packet, so please review that, um, it outlines the work that the commission has done over the past year, so make sure you look at that.
Thank you very much, councilmember Sweet. Um, sustainability, can I say?
Yeah, so we have, hold on, I put my. Notes, we had a meeting yesterday, um. Alright. So a couple of updates are asked, I guess I'll start off with one thing, um, coming from commission, so you see the. The, um. The annual report that was added, so definitely look at that, it goes over, um, a lot of good information. And, um, the commission started, you know, went through again and kind of updated goals and tried to get a sense of where each of the commissioners. Wanted to focus, um, there's some good connection with some different areas for us, um. Um, one thing is that, um, I wonder, I would like to see if there is support. From, um, someone else on council, the commission would like to have a presentation to council about birthday. Um, that will be coming up in April, and they're looking to, um. Have about like a five to ten minute presentation at the end of January or beginning of February. Um. For you, so thanks for, thank you, Steve, you are on my list, so I'm glad you will support that, um. Also, um, Jesse, uh, we also talked about, um. Um, the sustainability commission is also interested in creating a form. That we could use to gather information from the community about things they'd like to see for a neighborhood resilience and sustainability. And that this would go to informing a community sustainability resource guide. Um, and we spent a lot of time during the commission's meeting talking about, uh, pattern books, um. But, um, and and thinking about ways to get that started. Um, and so we also talked about ways that, uh, we can think about having resources needed. From the city to support strong neighborhood ties and improve community.
From the city to support strong neighborhood ties and improve communication and care-based safety network. Um and so. Um and so the hope would be that once they make this form, that it'd be something that each of the council members will take back to our wards. Um in order to get feedback from the community directly to help support that effort and work, so. I hope that others will be also excited about doing that. Um and supporting um the commission and. I think those are the main thing, um. The main things from, oh, I'll just say one last thing, um from there is that during that meeting, um. There was a sharing of a um. A committee member put forward an idea um around beef sugar use, um and so the commission is gonna have. Come in and present, um and, you know, thinking about other options that other municipalities use. And it's supposed to be instead of like salt and things for the roads. Um there's different ways, uh it was great, Bonnie shared different ideas, um and so. They'll be taking that up and I I told the. Community member to put together a proposal and we can bring it forward to consider, so. Thank you, uh H C. Councilor Major, she like, and um another discussing some of the stuff I mentioned last meeting about um. Every serving and whatnot of um. Because our historic district, but that'll be forthcoming in a future meeting. Thank you, planning commission.
Uh planning commission met, um. Uh first time that I wanted liaison, this is the first time that uh Brian just transferred on as a member. There was one issue, uh the excellent uh came up for approving. Rooming houses in the historic district and the um. Overwhelming times was. Fairable for that, um it it lends to flexible use of uh standing structures. Um that haven't been able to do this in the past, and so um. It was pretty unanimous that everybody on the uh. Commission was in favor of that and so that passed.
Thank you, it'll be good. Uh they haven't met since I was. Uh some call.
Um they haven't met this year, there's a number of meetings, uh. It was uh over the last couple of weeks, they're usually towards the end of March.
What's? Uh we have, they have not met, I, there's no plan to meet this month, actually. Little holiday, I mean, this, I will rest it, yeah, if you will, okay. Um Urban County meets either this Sunday or next day, tomorrow. Okay, tomorrow, so five or four. Um and then the DDA has not met yet for Jay, for the month of Jason, but. Uh for the rest of the pool. All right, and by the time you invited, she's willing, Annie too.
I would love for Commissioner Somerville to give us this update, and we would like to do so.
You mind, are you okay with that, because I, I, Lord knows, I want to take any credit for all the hard work that you guys did for. Me or leave and whatnot, which was a. Don't be nervous, Tom.
Good evening, hey, council, um so I'm happy to report that our first um. Planned bicentennial event um of year two hundred was a major success, um there were many moments. In the last year that we uh. Myself and staff, um some major fellow city staff, um weren't sure that we were gonna be able to pull it off, it started out as an idea on West Cross, um. If anybody noticed, the week of between Christmas and New Year's, um or as far as actually close, breaking more service, so there were no active um restaurants open in the evening. Um which would have been kind of an issue when we're trying to get people to hang out in the area before a ball drop, so. Um we pivoted to downtown uh with about a month to plan, um we had a really good turnout, um. Multi-generational, um really fun. One thing that the mayor and I talked about afterwards was that the event was a major success, both at seven o'clock and midnight, and we had serial police presence, um so we were just, you know. Uh kind of unpacking that on after the weekend, and it was just really nice to see folks gather, um going into this year, um. We will probably ask all of you to help us get the word out about love letters. That's where we're collecting stories and asking people to basically write a love letter about Islanny, and we'll be sharing those um. In many different forms, both digitally and um on paper and in other creative ways, um. What else? Our next two events are quite a while away, although to me they seem not far enough away, um. On July fourth, we'll be revealing the time capsule that was buried fifty years ago. Um at the water tower, and then on August nineteenth, that will be the. Like main event where we do a number of things um to highlight. The two hundred years of Islanny, including um, we are starting to, you know, have really good local artists um from different. Genres of music who are gonna be performing throughout the day, um and we're looking to aggravate some of the local brewers for. Um things like theater and also kids corner, we're working with you, so lots of really good stuff happening right now, um. We could, of course, use more support just getting the word out, um I think. We, we saw lots of people on New Year's Eve, but there could always be more, um so I think that's my update, unless I missed something, Jennifer.
What was the date you said, August?
August nineteenth is like the main event, um and that is tentative and planned for, um. Officially in eleven AM start time, um however, I believe um we're coordinating now with Rotary Club, and they're gonna do their like. Annual pancake breakfast um before the official start time with the opening ceremony. So the, the time will be officially eleven, but Rotary will be there with their pancake breakfast a few hours before, um and all that will be. Shared on ICSI two hundred dot com.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Somerville.
You're welcome.
All right. Um so now's our opportunity for council to focus business, so I usually start on that end, but on this end, council member Tucson.
All right, so if anybody remembers the last, what two council meetings, I was talking about the uh the cream's winter environment, um. Giveaway tour, um the two locations that I attended, um in Inkster and. Lomond Park in Inkster and the West Willow Neighborhood Association here in Ipsy talented. Were great turnouts, um and being that I am a co-founder of the community of the cream tomorrow on, um. I have a couple of connections in the backend to figure out what we, what they need and what we need. To continue doing um things like that in other cities and in our home city of Ipsy. Um and really it's just funding, so if anybody out there would like to donate to the grain, you can do so on their website. Um just to get more community interaction in the home, it'll be called some analysis chapter, the number one chapter, the first chapter, so. Um yeah, just to get more community um events out here and. Yeah, be able to do more things in our own city. Thank you.
That is all.
That is all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jason. Councilmember Sweet.
Um, thank you all, um I'm excited to be back um with this group, um sort of the city. Uh a couple of things, I wanted to bring up the, was talked about last year, so we don't lose focus of it, the property tax exemptions, um and we. Where um to lose sight of that and where that might be, I know that there was. Um hopefully gonna be a report presented by the city assessor. On that, um so just to keep that in the front of our minds here. Um and then after um. Reviewing some common themes from tonight, um about goals, um seeing a lot of C I P um investments into facilities, projects, staffing, resources. Um is there, it think it could be beneficial if it's possible for. To coordinate a, a tour of city facilities. Um by council members, so we can kind of make informed decisions when it comes to budgetary purposes, if you're looking at reviewing all city owned and operated facilities. Um seeing what our staff actually do every day instead of just hearing about it. Um I know that that might be a conflict with some of our personal work schedules, but I think if people are willing to make it work, I think it will help make a, could make better informed decision making. Uh when you can actually see what's happening day to day, so that was the suggestion. Um. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wilcoxen.
Okay.
All right, council member Dee Simmons.
Yes.
All right, so always, I'm always excited to get communications from our commissions and also seeing areas where are open line um to help get work done and spread that. Spread that work, so um. Yes, and then I also wanna say too, I'm planning my first uh War Three community meeting. Um I'm looking at the date of uh January eighteenth from about five thirty to seven. And I just need to confirm this space, I'll be sending information out once, um I'm able to do that. Um, we already talked about that, um although I do want, I just have this question, I guess. Like we can figure it out off, but in terms of which week. Or what um would we wanna have that presentation from the Sustainability Commission, whether it will be. One look at that, the next meeting in January, the first meeting in February, um. I don't know, I just will connect with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe the Thursday one is definitely.
Yeah, with the second goal session meeting on the twenty-fourth, and there's already the presentation scheduled from the auditors on the. On the first. Yeah, probably the first meeting in February.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to. Um. Then we talked about that, um so then I guess a couple, just the last couple of things I wanted to say, I just wanna say, um. Uh so I'll be using multiple forms of outreach and sharing information. Um I hope to find ways to experiment with different tools in order to reach more people more directly. Uh I recognize that some tools work better for some and that other tools are work better for others. And to recognize that I'm not trying to reach every one person with each tool, um because we don't have one way to reach everyone. Um and so there's not one way or no one right way. And I will hear them differently based on circumstances, um. The main expect, expectation, exception people can keep note of for folks. Is that if they wanna send me um city business, they can use my. City email, uh Dee Simmons at citywithipsilani dot com. For that purpose, um because that is viable. Um and it also makes it easier for me to track, keep track of my own boundaries in my life. Um they also, you can also put in um comments on the deep click it, fix it link um to report a problem on the city's website. And so just wanna make that clear to everyone, and then also. Just to bring back something that came up um during those conversations about the appointment. Um in terms of charter commission, and so uh for the city based on our charter, current charter. Um it is up for, um it goes to citywide vote automatically every eight years. And so when I was looking at, could you confirm that?
That, that was actually removed from the charter in twenty fourteen, there's no longer requirement to review the charter in every, every eight years.
Okay, so the one that's online, I think, doesn't have that.
The one that's on Unicode?
Uh, I guess so, I just went on the website, so I looked on the website and the city charter there, and it still had that eight-year requirement.
Yeah, that's probably an old, I'll uh kill that link.
Okay, so thank you for that, because I was going to say that the next that would have been twenty twenty-six, which I think is too far away, so that we don't have that requirement.
The chart, I started, rather, charter commission was brought to the vote of the people in twenty twelve and it was defeated.
Mm-hmm. Um so. Well, yeah, so twenty twelve is. Before I lived here, so that's probably a good amount of time. Um that's gonna break that down, um. And so that's something I definitely want to connect with others about, because there's multiple areas that have come up. A wrap that were hearken back to our um, to our charter commission, including appointments. Um process, um. As well as some other things, and things around our commission. Um things around our elections being partisan or nonpartisan. Um and any number of things, there's a lot of things in there, so. Um I'll definitely be bringing that up and trying to connect with other council members about that. And to think about um working um to maybe add this to the ballot for ten and twenty-four. So that we could take twenty twenty-three this year to do a lot of community education about our charter, what's in the charter, what's the purpose. Um and um to know that it's coming up for a vote, um and what to expect when you see it. Um and what the question is, um so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
So by, by, I want to say Happy New Year, and I want to bring awareness to the community and family event. Happening next Friday, January the twentieth. At Park Ridge Community Center, is geared toward kindergarten and twelve grade students, but again, it is a family event, they will have. A local dinner, family time, a college fair, and they will talk about the free tuition at Wasnot. Anybody over twenty-five is able to go to Wasnot Community College for free. That's awesome.
When, when, when was that again?
It is Friday, January the twentieth from three PM to six PM. And it is a free event, and people have a chance to win a sixty-five inch TV.
Well, they do.
I have a flyer too for anyone that.
And thanks, because I was gonna share that too, and I have it electronically too, that I can send out, we can put it, where we've been putting the community, that's on the site. Um in addition to what come from the community to share, um. First of all, Happy New Year, secondly, my, one of my favorite days of the year, MLK Day is approaching on Monday. And so there are gonna be numerous activities happening throughout the community. Um one of which is hosted first thing in the morning by the ministerial, the Minister's Alliance of Ipsilani and Ann Arbor. Um in the vicinity, and they're gonna have their annual MLK program on Monday, um with a march that begins at nine. Um and it begins at the old Key Bank building in the parking lot. And we'll move down the sidewalk to and at Second Baptist Church, where then the program itself will begin at nine thirty, um. So this is an open invitation, please attend if you are able, um also, EMU, of course, will be having all of their annual. Um MLK Day events, um with the luncheon, and then uh breakout sessions in the afternoon. Yeah, oh, or me, yeah, if you wanna go to lunch, and you have not, or our VP, or someone didn't contact you, please let me know, so we can get you all. Um at a table. Um and then there will also be a panel discussion hosted by um a group of Black Lives Matter supporters, I mean, this call from um community mental health. With some of our newly elected and local elected officials to talk about, um, you know. Moving forward, the future of our community, the future of our county as a whole, and I believe there are three of us on, um on the dais. Councilmember King, councilmember Tucson, and myself, I'm not sure if there's anyone else. Blink wants if I'm wrong back there. Oh, four, and councilmember Dee Simmons as well, that does right as well, um who will participate um on that panel on Monday afternoon, and so uh. Once, if there's official, you know, documentation, I'll share it out about the panel, but we'll absolutely be at EMU, absolutely be at Second Baptist. And trying to, you know, show up and visit as many of the MLK events. Um on the day of service as possible within the community. And then, um. Lastly, I suppose, um just reiterating how wonderful the New Year's uh celebration was in downtown. Um I mean, it was amazing to see so many people out there and so excited. No one cared if it was raining, if it was cold or anything, folks were gathered, and it was just a wonderful sight to see and a really, really good time. And if that is an example of what the rest of this year's celebration is gonna look like, I am ecstatic about, you know, what we're gonna do uh within the community, and I'm really looking forward to opening this time capsule, because I am so curious. As to what is in there, um. And let's see, is there anything else? Um. That is all, I suppose, coming on. Lots of activities in the event. Um, city manager, I have no communication, they will be coming out in the C I O. Oh, and I wanna go back to the um. Not only the C I O, but the newsletter, remember that is open to any member of council, if you have anything you wanna put into the, the newsletter that goes out at the beginning of each month. Um Tom and Elise are usually the folks who are putting that together, formatting it and getting it out to the community. And so I know I do have a standing section, but if anybody ever wants to put something in there, you could go free to reach out to them, and it can be added to the newsletter, so. Please utilize it as another mechanism to get information out to community members as well. And don't forget that the upstairs office, we used to share a space, so we can talk about how to utilize it, and we're also using it like. Oh. Well, that might hopefully is on office, and I didn't know it'd be used for something, um well. Well, nevermind, hopefully it's an office, I didn't know it would be used for something, um, we'll circle back on that, with everything else then.
We'll, I will have them send a deadline out for the newsletter.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bar.
There's been some, some talk about the charter this evening. Uh, like to remind, city council, there's two ways. That the charter can be changed, one is by amendment of individual provisions. Another way is by a charter, uh, commission that can revise the full charter, and I'll send a memo out, you know, on the different ways.
Thank you so much. Um, let's see, we already went over the communications. Um, this is our second opportunity for public comment. Commissioner Somerville, I see your hand raised.
Welcome again, council, um, my name is Annie Summerwell, I live in quarter three, uh, I'm super excited to, um, be here tonight as your current commissioner. Um, a few updates, last week the new board was sworn in, um, I'm happy to report out that we are, um, majority women, majority millennial, and majority minority. Um, I was appointed the service chair of the working session, which is the, um. Body that kind of steers a lot of the policy agenda, um, in format and working in collaboration both with. Leadership team, um, and staff departments, um, super excited about that, um, also happy to report that the, uh. Top priority for board leadership is, um, both short-term housing needs as well as long-term. Um, many of us are, um, already at work on, um. A, an official countywide housing strategy, um, for to adopt. Other things that I'm excited about, and I will keep probably sharing information about with you all, um, our prosecutor's office has an economic. Justice unit, and they are focused on making sure that workers and renters are not being exploited, so. Super excited, um, to kind of share ways that you all can get involved in that work. Um, as well as, um, the forthcoming, um, hopefully at our next meeting, we will adopt, um, formally a reparations commission. Uh, members of the community, um, will be able to apply and there will be a process, um, standard to all the other boards. And commissions that the, um, board commissioners appoint, so just flagging that, and I'll keep you all posted, um, when that's official, um. What else? I guess I'll just add that, I'm really excited about goal setting, this is, was my favorite time of the year as a councilperson, to see where, um. Everybody can agree on certain things and prioritize shared goals, um, and I guess as both your commissioner and, um. Somebody who works in the state legislature, I'm really eager to, um, work with you all. To make sure that we can capitalize on the historic, um, democratic trifecta that we have in Lansing, there are a lot of state dollars right now, but I think we can leverage. Um, both for county-wide housing needs, but also, um, just some long-term, um. Issues like local bridge funding for places like Ipsilani who have struggled over the years, we have a bridge in Ward Three actually, that is. Um, it's going to cost a lot of money, so I'm super eager to see what the state does, um, to help local, especially small communities like our city. Um, and I will keep you all posted on that, so thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience? Oh, look, Mr. Doos, hello.
First of all, I want to congratulate, uh. Annie for such a wonderful job and dropping the first ball. I hadn't seen a ball drop since the eighties, when I was in New York. But I hadn't seen one drop since then, but I would have seen one in Ipsilani actually drop. The actual ball, but I have seen other balls, uh. Drop in the city of Ipsilani, as it pertains to the police department, there hasn't been many balls dropped. I cannot pick a police chief for the city of Ipsilani, but I can tell you. What you have now is not conducive to what the city of Ipsilani need. As a chief of police leader in the Y P D. Now, done with that. Counsel, I see you guys on the right page, doing the right thing, putting people in place that you don't have to train. And somebody that's already been there did that. I see you guys put my friend Evan back in the seat. And that's good, that is great. He's sweet, I know. Yeah, he's sweet, I know. Dark clouds may rise. And storms and winds may blow. But I tell it to valley, everywhere. Ward three, then found a savior. And he's sweet, I know, that's you, little brother, and I'm not known discredited from you, my sister, but I'm gonna put it to you like this. You were there alone for a minute. But the book says, one can taste a thousand, and two can put ten thousand in flight, now you got your second one, do your thing.
Well, thank you very much. But I have to say, I feel some highway. Even get a song. Maybe next time, maybe next time, um. Is there anyone else who would like to address council, either in the room or on Zoom?
Anyone, uh, attending virtually would like to address council, please raise your hand now. No hands, everyone, age counsel.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for an efficient and effective meeting. Um, as Councilmember King did say, I knew, you know, where's, I want my song, practice, write one. Practice it for us in the future, um, but thanks, everybody, and I know we have some back-to-back meetings coming up over the next few weeks, so we don't get that. One week in between, but this is the good stuff, this is the stuff that I look forward to as well, so. I look forward to seeing everyone for goal setting part two next Tuesday. Um, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.